Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's town council meeting. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We'll start out with the this month's, or I should say September's financial report. Rich, whenever you're ready.
Percent of the fiscal year is completed. We've received about eighteen percent of our budgeted operating revenues and spent approximately twenty-one percent of our budgeted operating expenditures as of September 30. There's nothing noteworthy in the expense report, but I did want to mention that we are next month, we get our large income tax distribution and our audit has started and it's almost complete. So we'll have our annual audit will be finalized very shortly as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Rich? Thanks very much. We'll turn it over to Todd for his town manager's report. Todd, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'll make this brief. A lot of the staff has been involved in quite a number of major projects and efforts over the last month, many of which will be discussed tonight. Among these include the Bethesda Market Park Development Project, the Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative at the county level, as well as seeking to seeking proposed clarifications to state law related to municipal regulatory authority. We've also been involved in continuing to work with state, county, and Purple Line officials on fencing and barrier improvements along the Purple Line alignment adjacent to the town. We were supposed to receive the cost difference, some screening improvements to improve privacy and 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 safety along those along that alignment. We haven't received it yet. I am hoping we'll receive it within the next week or so, and then we'll need to consult with Purple Line officials to determine the timeline for the council's consideration of that. Staff also met with MCDOT, Montgomery County Department of Transportation officials to discuss plans along with Vice Mayor Rush for CCS T Phase Two. Specifically, we discussed the design of the crosswalks across Willow and the proposed mixing area they're contemplating for the corner of Forty-seventh and Willow adjacent to the park. Staff also processed Corso Chevy Chase's tree removal permits and appeals, which will be heard tonight, specifically the appeal. We began overgrown vegetation enforcement program. I completed Cocon Run stabilization project. We prepared for Zimmerman Park renovations, finally, as well as East and Leland intersection improvements. Dave can give an update on those if you wish. Staff also prepared for fall tree planting and continue to provide project support to to the towns committees. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any questions at all?
Yes, I'd like to get an update on Zimmerman Park, what's happening with the ongoing delay after delay after delay.
Sure. Yeah, we finally have all of our regulatory approvals. WSCC has finished their little sewer project that was potentially going to hold us up. So we were able to get that expedited and they finished it a few weeks ago. The contractor is supposed to be having a surveyor coming out to lay out the limits of disturbance, hopefully at the end of this week, after which point we can get our sediment control inspection, get our forest conservation inspection, and then start putting up our silt fencing and tree protection measures. And then we can actually finally start construction, hopefully within two or three weeks. Erosion and sediment control. Since we disturbed more than 5,000 square feet of land area, there's a county permit that is approved. So the it's approved. We need to do our pre-construction inspection to meet with them to make sure that everybody's on the same page with where all the protective measures go and how the site will be accessed. And additionally, there's MNPPC Forest Conservation Inspection because we're subject to a forest conservation plan. So yeah, hopefully. And then so they're gonna come in, start the grading, and then their same contractor is our concrete company. So when they come in to pour the sidewalk for the pathway in Zimmerman Park, they're also going to do the East and Leland road adjustment. So that'll be done sort of hopefully sometime in November.
The intersection improvement that we had approved a couple of months, August, no, July, excuse me.
So so that is my update.
Any other questions for Todd or Dave?
Oh, yeah, I do have a question. Since we're going to be talking about trees soon, what's what is preparing for fall tree planting and how many trees are replanting them? And does this include the public trees as well as the ones that are going on private property?
We're gonna probably have twenty-five or thirty public trees and about the same private.
Okay.
So I'm working on the list now, but I have it there. I'll confirm it.
Okay. Sir, if you'd like to sit down, there there's a monitor there.
I wanted to just say something to the council about the tennis courts in the playground.
Okay, great. Well, just to give me about 30 seconds and and I'll open that up to you. I just wanted to offer you a seat because you're great. Great. Are there any other questions? Okay, so we do have an important public hearing this evening as well, but if there are any other public comments outside of the tree removal appeal for Corso, gentlemen, I'm happy to have you come on up and just introduce yourself, please. Exactly. It's very official here. We have a number of people on the line that they want to also hear as well.
I'm Lawrence Rothman. I live on Oak Ridge Lane, about a third of the way from
What's your address on Oak Ridge?
Well, I'm not sure I want to tell you guys because you might send a hit squad after me. I mean, it's not not like I'm a election official in Georgia or Arizona or Nebraska. I just don't want to have to hire armed guards for my house.
It's just a matter of process. If you could just let us know.
I live at forty-two nineteen Oak Ridge Lane. It's about the fourth house or so on the left on Oak Ridge Lane, which is the extension of Elm Street. So it's like a forty-two hundred block of Elm Street. And I used to play tennis. And about 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 eleven years ago, I had my first time where my my leg collapsed and just, you know, you know, my guy, the joint separated from, you know, at this year. But it heals back on its own because there's blood rushing between the the, you know, if you've got if you've got bones, you don't have blood. But if you have muscles, you have blood rushing. So anyhow, it healed in about a maybe six weeks or something like that. And then I had it happen again. Just about, well, before COVID, but after they opened up the new Wheaton Regional Library and Rec Center, I was walking down the stairs there and my leg collapsed, the same leg. This time, it it felt like it healed completely. But, you know, because I'm not a wasn't an active athlete, I didn't see a doctor to worry about whether it healed. Well, it turns out it hasn't. It's a little my knee gets a little bit sore when I do any activity. But I signed up, I tried to sign up for the Maryland Senior Olympics to play tennis in the over eighty tennis tournament. And so I started practicing the court here at the backboard up, you know, you know, on the other side of the park. And I started practicing at at Wheaton Regional Park where they have they have six courts that they keep immaculately clean. They it's like they wash them every day or something. The only thing, the only time they're ever unplayable is when it's actually raining or where there's sitting water on the courts, but they're
Did you have a specific comment about the courts here?
Yeah, I they were completely covered. The nearer court was completely covered with mud when I went to practice on that court. The far court had leaves and twigs and stuff like that, not as much mud. The the blacktop is covered with mud. You've got people putting up playpens on the the nearer court on top of the mud. You know, parents are putting their kids to play in mud. And I went to the rec center and I told them what I had observed at at Wheaton Regional Park. And also, I've been to Olney and Olney has more tennis courts. They have about eighteen tennis courts. And they keep those courts immaculate, every last one of them. They designed this court here so that, you know, the the mud from the trees come, you know, comes onto the court. It's just very poorly engineered. The courts lasted, what, about ten years or twelve years? And now they're they're pretty horrible.
So you're asking it's it's a county owned and maintained facility, but you're asking
the rec center people to have somebody come and clean the courts, you know, sort of like so we could, you know, Chevy Chase could, you know, sort of be as nice as as Olney or as nice as Wheaton. But, you know, those courts are much better designed than these are. They they just put the courts in here and didn't take into account the fact that there are trees and mud all around the courts. And they didn't put in adequate drainage. They somebody put in a drain. And they actually did have somebody come in and power wash the the tennis courts, but it was impossible to get all the mud off of them. And the drain, the drainage doesn't work very well. So there are two ways to fix it. Well, three, four, five different ways to fix it. One of them is you could put little slits in the tennis court so that the water, instead of puddling up on the on the courts, drains down underneath on the sides of the courts. The other thing is you could put in a
Well, I think yeah, what I'm what I'm hearing is that you'd like to have the courts better maintained, which would basically mean for us to
I have some specific suggestions, too.
Well, again, it would all be for the county.
I talked to the technician who was doing the cleaning. And he had a he had a great idea. I had a good idea. He had a great idea. So I I I don't know whether my idea is I know his idea is even better than my idea, but I don't know whether his is cheaper than mine. My idea was that you dig a big hole between the two, you know, between where the two nets come together is about a maybe a ten foot opening there. And you put in, you work underneath and you put in good drainage so that the courts drain. The water goes down off the court and drains out into the place where the trees are and stuff like that.
Okay.
May I make a suggestion? I'm Barney Rush, Vice Mayor, and I play tennis a lot. I have actually gone to the deputy head of the Parks Department and asked them to clean off the courts. But I'd be happy to meet with you one on one to go through all your recommendations and see what we can do.
We can do that after this.
Idea. Could we do that?
Yeah. Do you want me to just give a quick synopsis of the two ideas? One is you make a big hole between the two nets and you, you know, go in there and you, you know, put in good drainage. The other thing that the guy, the technician pointed out that the courts are really badly engineered for long term use. He suggested putting up a glass roof over the the fence. And that would keep the rain and the mud off of the court completely to start with. So you wouldn't have the problem of having to drain the court.
Okay.
That and that seems I don't know what glass costs versus labor doing drainage, but that might be cheaper. So his his idea is well worth considering. And I'll talk to you. How long is the meeting going to be?
At least until nine PM this evening.
Not not tonight, but let's get in touch another time.
Okay. Should I give you my phone number or give somebody my?
We have your
It's three oh one seven eight seven eight five five nine. That's my cellphone. Three zero one seven eight seven eight five five nine. And I have your, you know, the town of Tevi Chase office
Yep.
in my directory.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
So if you call me from that number, I'll even know who you are.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any other public comments outside of the public hearing? And giving the opportunity for those on the line as well?
Yes. Hi, this is Jennifer Barnett. I have a public comment.
Yes.
Um, it has recently come to my attention that the the public, I believe it's called Public Safety Committee, um, that its primary focus will be addressing the traffic situation on Stanford Ave between Oak Ridge and East Ave, that it's been stated by the committee that that's the most troublesome area within the town. And I'm just not sure how that was determined. I reside on Thornapple Street between Meadow and Connecticut. And, you know, we have, we've had at least ten cars hit recently, um, you know, just due to speeding and a lot of cut through traffic. So I'm just curious how that area got designated as the focus, the primary concern of the committee, the Public Safety Committee versus, you know, other areas, including my block?
So Jennifer, just for the record, could you state your address, please?
Thirty-nine fifteen Thorn Apple Street.
Great. And I wasn't present at the meeting, maybe Barney can.
I'm the liaison to the Public Services Committee, Jen. The we've we the council gets consistently a series of comments from people concerned, particularly about the hill on Rosemary between Maple and East. And so when the the we wanted to make sure as a council that we set out some priority areas for the different committees to consider potential action on. Nothing, just basically absent look into it. Since that's what we had heard about from many residents, that was what we reflected back to the committee as not the only thing they're going to do. They actually have quite a busy agenda for the year. But that is one of the major issues they're going to look at. We're certainly open to considering others. And I would recommend that you come and come to a committee meeting and make
Okay.
Concern of the traffic.
I did attend, I think, meetings.
Yeah, about last year, when I was liaison to the Public Services Committee, there were a number of residents who expressed concerns about Thorn Apple and kind of cars coming from Connecticut, as well as coming from the town onto Connecticut and some cars being sideswiped and things like that. Police have been notified of this to to take a look. We've looked at the the lighting of the street to see if there's some sort of we looked at just parking in general. But it's an ongoing, excuse me.
We put in a speed bump?
We put in a third, a third speed bump. So it's not as if it hasn't been paid attention to as a an area, nor is it something that we're kind of moving on to another as much as it's on the on the radar, if you will, if that's appropriate.
Yeah. So, um, you know, my household advocated for the speed bump and my my household invested a lot of time in getting the speed bump installed. I did attend the public service committees, and I think we did voice our concerns repeatedly about the block. But my my specific question is, Mr. Rush mentioned, you know, I'm trying to figure out how this block got got selected. The the block is is on Stanford. And he said, a number of residents came. Well, I think that's my point. You know, I I want to understand, you know, our complaint complaints here on Thorn Apple were the complaints over on Stanford. And, you know, how will that be equitable in terms of getting the attention of the Public Service Committee?
I I understand this correctly. Irene was speaking before, and she was the liaison last year. It sounds to me that actually the committee did take up and that led to the third speed bump. So there was
No, this, the the committee was not involved with the speed bump at all.
Okay, so I think if and forgive me for I want to make sure that we're understanding. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to say that the only focus of of the of Public Services Committee is this particular area on Stanford. It's just that we we receive a lot of different suggestions from residents on traffic concerns in different parts of the town. And then there are certain tools within our toolkit that can be applied towards a situation. And then there are other situations that occur that such as the sideswiping where we're all the the tools of the toolkit have been applied. And we're we're not saying that we're not paying attention to it as much as we're not sure within the town's ability to affect a situation, what what can be done, given that police officers are patrolling that area. There have been speed bumps installed. The lighting was, you know, just to make sure everybody can can see that we're we're running out of or we have run out of of certain tools for that. Not all that said, that isn't to say that there could be other discussions that can take place. So we'll definitely take that into account.
That's what I'm think I'm asking for. And I really want to be, you know, factual here in terms of asking the first of all, I didn't say that it's the only issue that the public service is addressing. I said that I believe it's been given priority or primary or most important status. And I think that's the question of sort of, you know, residents complaining and you're saying we get complaints. That's that's what I'm trying to see. Like, is there a record of number of complaints? And how does that compare in terms of getting resources assigned to address a problem? And then in terms of the focus that has been given to my block with respect to the troublesome traffic, I spoke to a few police officers and they told me, this is anecdotally, that they were completely unaware of the issues on my block. So I don't know if something got lost in that, you know, lost in translation with respect to, you know, boots on the ground, sort of knowing about this issue. But if someone could sort of follow up, that would be appreciated.
Okay, that's that's fair. Thank you for that. Are there any other comments? Yes, please. Can you can you come up? Sorry. Okay.
Hi, Thornton Matheson, four two two five Leland. I it's the tree planting was mentioned. And my understanding, I worked on this issue. It's been a few years. But my understanding was that the policy of the town is currently to plant native trees and cherry trees. I noticed recently in Rosemary Circle, there was a new ginkgo tree planted. I was wondering why an exception was made in that circumstance, or or if there are exceptions made.
I please, Tolbert, if you could answer, if you wouldn't mind to focus on the line can hear as well.
That tree was planted before the policy was instituted, but it was planted on Stanford Street. And the resident wanted to change that tree for a what he thought was a healthier tree. And so the tree was alive, so we moved it to to Rosemary, the circle. Just to, I mean, we weren't going to throw away the tree. We'd planted it two or four years earlier. So that's why that ended up there.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. Any other comments? General comments? Okay, public comments is closed. So we're going to start with our public hearing on the tree removal appeal by Corso Chevy Chase. I see that Ron Bolt is on the line. Ron, if you'd like to introduce this so that we all have our process down for this evening.
Sure. Yes, this is the tree appeal filed by Corso DC LLC regarding the property at seventy-one hundred Connecticut Avenue. We have received seven emails on this, and they have been entered into the record, shared with the council members and the applicant. A staff report has been submitted, as well as a report from the town arborist. The hearing will begin with a presentation by the applicant. And the applicant can please note that the council has had the opportunity to review all the materials in advance. So you do not need to restate everything that's in there, but please feel free to address what you'd like to address. After that, the council members will have an opportunity to ask their questions of the applicant or staff. Then anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions or make a comment and support our opposition will have the opportunity to do so. The applicant will then be given a brief rebuttal on those comments. Finally, the record will close, council will deliberate, and entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision. The decision is not final till it's been written up and signed. And that usually takes about a week or two. So I believe I did see Mr. Grant Davies is on the line. So I will turn it over to you, Mr. Davies. And if you want to refer to a document in the record, Todd's able to do a share screen there.
Yes.
You hear me? Thank you. My my name is Grant Epstein. I'm here representing the applicant. Thank you for having me. And thank you for including us in this this process. This has not been a short process. It's been a long process, but we are, I think, in the middle of it. We have come a long way, worked, I think, very well and collaboratively with the town council, with residents of the of the town. As you know, we are building a senior housing, a senior living facility. And we worked with the town council, with the residents, and with the county to design a plan that was ultimately adopted by the county through the site plan process. In addition, as part of that process, a forest conservation plan was was recorded and certified, which included approximately three acres of land of the twelve acres, so approximately twenty-five percent into permanent forest conservation easements. So those trees would be protected in perpetuity. As part of the development, we have concentrated the building components as close to the middle of the site as we could, hearing feedback from the town that that was important, and kept as many trees around the perimeter in those forest conservation easements where we could. As you know, development is a messy process, and there are some trees that are on the site that will need to come down. We have applied to remove some of those trees here in the appeal. I think there's approximately eighty-seven, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but eighty-seven trees that that we're talking about now. We are replanting two hundred and twenty-two trees in their place. And we're planting them in specific places so that they fill in the gaps where the forest conservation easements aren't, and where there are the trees that are dying or invasive species. So we have worked, I think, fairly well with the with the town and with Mr. Feather to determine the the status of the trees and which trees at the minimum could be removed. And that's what we've included in our application and in our subsequent appeal. I'd be happy to answer questions after that.
Thank you.
No, I have some questions. First of all, I will certainly concur that we've had a very good relationship with you guys and and worked very steadily and very pleased with all the covenants and all the arrangements that were negotiated. I will share with you that when we had a conversation with Andrew Fritsch, our county council member, he said the county council couldn't believe the number of covenants that were attached to this transaction. It was very unusual, but represented the very serious negotiations that have been undertaken. The questions I have really have to do with some of the particulars on the perimeter. If I understand this properly, and there's the forest easement area. Then there's a 15-foot setback, which I was not familiar with that idea. And I see that there are a number of trees, healthy trees, that are you're planning to take down. And Dr. Feather, please feel free to also respond to this, that are in that 15-foot strip. I don't see any trees to come down that are, and specifically the the forest conservation area on Thornapple. I don't see any trees to come down that are north of that 15-foot setback. In other words, from that setback point to the street, nothing has changed. No, there are no trees coming down. But within that 15-foot section, the strip, I did count something like eight healthy trees that were coming down. And I was curious if you could explain further why you feel it's necessary to take down those healthy trees that are in the forest conservation area, albeit just within that 15-foot strip, but still inside of it. Could you speak to that?
They're actually not in the forest conservation easement itself, those trees. They're outside of the easement because the sidewalk that is against the buildings on that side that we worked well to have connectivity and the sidewalk along that side, those trees are in the way of that sidewalk. So that that is, they they aren't in the forest conservation easement itself. They are in the area that is adjacent to the building. And the the issue is is that those trees, their roots will be so impacted by the buildings that they just wouldn't survive. There are a number of trees, I think, close to that area that we think might die, but we have tried to save them. And we've included those as being tried to save.
I want to be helpful to put up. It's the tree removal permit application and it's the map at the back end of it. And if I misread the legend of the map, I'm sorry if I did, but I.
There's a lot of lines in that.
There are a lot of lines and.
Bear with me a second, please.
Okay, you've had it.
I think you want.
So, and perhaps, Grant, you could, I I thought that the Morse code line, I'll call it, the long line with a dot, the long line and the dot is the 15-foot setback. And then south of that, the longer straight line that's interrupted is the boundary of the forest conservation area.
Yes, so the.
I'm looking at the trees that are inside of that 15-foot strip, which I I presume meant that they were in the forest.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the ones.
I I understand that outside the forest conservation area, you've got the pathway next to the building and trees have to come out. You also have the garage, so I was not questioning those. But specifically in that 15-foot strip inside of the forest conservation area, but below the 15-foot setback strip, there are about eight trees there. And and I was curious why you felt those had to come out.
If I can jump in, I think just to be described a little bit more accurately.
Sure, go to the mic, please.
Only go to the mic for the folks on the line.
Everybody can see on this one. So basically, there's an 82-foot setback from the Thornapple Street right of way to the buildings. There's actually a 20-foot area between the face of the buildings and the limits of disturbance. And then basically, at the edge of the limits of disturbance is where the forest conservation easement starts. So the forest conservation easement basically is represented by this line. This dotted Morse code line, the council will recall, is represents trees within 15 feet of the limits of disturbance that we require to be inventoried as part of this process. So these trees are partially, so I guess the trees here are within the limits of disturbance. The trees here within 15 feet of the limits of disturbance. And some of them are at the periphery of the forest conservation easement. But because of the expected construction work and access in order to build the buildings within this 20-foot area, you know, the critical root zones of a lot of these trees will be impacted by the proposed construction.
Okay, so this is this is the judgment, Dr. Feather, you concur with, that those trees would not survive with construction. And in terms of of county and planning, planning department review of this, what is their judgment about taking down these trees?
They they their limits were 24-inch diameter, what they consider a tree to be looked at. And there's two inches that can come down.
And but 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 the county has approved that those trees would come down? Okay, so they don't see this as violating the forest easement set conservation area that's been established?
I mean, they 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 consider those trees can't be saved because of the impact it was from the construction.
Okay.
There are several trees there that you notice. I think they're shown in the yellow there that are a little small or smaller. And we we have asked for a a permit to remove those, but we are attempting to save them and will attempt, you know, make every attempt to save them during construction.
Well, that's a segue to my other question. May I ask that? The I'd be grateful if you could walk through the exact process of that. The term is an odd term. Let's start, but I don't want to, before getting into what it's called, I want to make sure that we understand what it, what actually is the process here. So these nine trees you would be intending to save. I presume that means having a tree protection plan that you would approve, Tolbert, and would be outlined for each of them. So what is the need in advance to approve a potential, a subsequent decision to take them down as opposed to just assuming like we do when we approve tree variances? That if a tree protection plan goes in, we expect the tree to survive. We don't, we don't sort of prethink what happens if, we just agree that we're going to put in a protection plan.
I I think it's because we think they are going to die. Those trees are going to die. We're going to try because of the, we we don't really know exactly the root zone. You know, the root zone is kind of a circle, and sometimes the roots grow this way and sometimes the roots grow that way. I mean, you'd be able to tell me better, but we're going to try to save them, but we do not believe that they will survive.
Who makes the determination? That's the thing I want to get at. That's why I mentioned about the process. What's the process of review here? During construction after construction, a tree begins to, I guess, if the tree lives fine, you're not going to obviously then want to take it down, but you begin to notice some deterioration in the tree somehow. What what then happens here?
I I don't, I I don't know the answer to that exactly.
But the other thing, Barney, is there are several there that are contingent on plans that haven't been developed yet. For example, on, you know, pass through. There's two here trying to save a beech here, there's a pine here. But right now, they they don't know whether the sanitary sealer is going to come in or how big it's going to be. So once we know that, we'll know if these can be saved or not, these two. So and the other thing, there's two that the county set up with this contention are removed with intent to save. They're on Connecticut. And the way the sidewalk is shown to be built, they're very, they're mature trees too well.
Yeah, I see them.
Probably can't be saved if the sidewalk is built as shown. So that's up to the state and county, how they're going to judge how the sidewalk is going to be built.
Okay, I'm I'm, I hear all that. That's helpful. I don't think my question's been answered.
Councilmember Rush, I may be able to answer that question. So if if this request of the applicant were to be granted, the decision would reflect that if those, one of those nine trees were in the future to be deemed.
You just froze, Ron. In mid-flight.
Finding they would have to be made by the town arborist based on the code criteria. Trees would have to become hazardous because of the impacts from construction.
Sorry, Ron, you you froze.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Barney? Rush.
I don't know if you, you you froze after the word deemed for quite a while. So if you could repeat your statement, sorry.
You just froze again.
Oh, dear. That's too bad.
Someone else want to take a stab at answering?
Sure, I think the way that Tolbert and I sort of envisioned this process for these specific trees occurring was, you know, if the council approves them for removal with the intent to save, you know, we would put these tree protection measures in place. And then if the trees were to be requested for removal by Corso later because of construction impacts, because they, you know, are dying or have become hazardous, you know, Tolbert would review that. And as long as the tree protection measures that we had put in place as a condition of our permit had been maintained, you know, it would allow us to grant permission to remove them without them, A, being in violation of the ordinance or B, having to come back before the council for a second public hearing.
Well, I think if you use the term which is key to me, which is, is the town, as in through Dr. Feather's recommendations to you, is your approval required before any one of those nine trees could actually come down?
That's what we envisioned in sort of putting that as a subcategory on this appeal request.
From the point of view of Grant, is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, certainly.
I think that that helps. I'm going to think about it further, but that that to me is critical. In other words, I I understand that this is not a large number of trees, I grant it. No pun intended, but I grant that. But but this is very unusual for us, and I do not want the town's authority to ultimately determine whether a tree should come down or not to be devolved to the, to a developer, just as a matter of principle. So I think that if you were come to come to believe during the course of construction that one of these nine trees was actually not going to make it, I would, I mean, we maybe came to the last part of this. I'm probably out of order, but I I, my feeling is I'd rather, one, make sure that the town had to approve any ultimate decision. But that's the reason I'm asking about the process. I just think we ought to ventilate that and make sure that we think hard about what that process should look like if we're going to entertain an idea that we haven't normally done.
But what I'm understanding is that there's these outside decisions that still need to be made, whether it's WSSC or SHA or the county, and that's what's kind of keeping this a little bit murky in terms of a specific tree. Is that, is that the case for?
Yes, for some of them.
Yeah, yeah. So once that determination is made, maybe we say, look, obviously, we're going to get the, a copy of that information as well so that, Dr. Feather and the town, we can make sure that everyone's ticked and tied in in terms of the decision for the ultimate decision for the tree. Is that way to, yeah, okay, okay.
Seems reasonable to me.
Okay, thank you for that. Sure, go for it.
Sorry. Phase one and phase two. I fully understand the need to take down the trees that required for phase one. But we have experience in this town, and I personally feel this because it's the first decision I made on the council nine years ago. And we approved a tree coming down and then nothing happened to the house for about six years. And the tree, nonetheless, it's gone. My recollection from the discussion, which we've had with you and the economics, of course, is that it's hard for you to predict what the lag will be, the timeframe between completing phase one and being able to start phase two. Depends upon economics, how quickly you fill up, support from the banks, but we're looking at a year, two years? Who knows? Some respectable period of time. So I went over and looked carefully the other day. I do recognize that the great bulk of the land that's required for phase two is largely clear already. It's just, they're just fields, frankly. And many of the large trees that one sees from Connecticut have to come down even for phase one because they're right in the way of the access road. But I also did see some trees that looked to me as though they would be only necessary to have to come down in phase two. So my question is, would you be amenable to recognize where this could be worked out with Dr. Feather? That if there are some healthy trees that do not, are not needed for phase one development, either for the buildings or the access road or the laydown area, that those could stand and stay until you actually begin to work on phase two?
I I think that's a reason, reasonable suggestion. There are a couple of, not impediments, but conditions to that 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 I see. One, there's, we we need to keep all the parking on the site for the constructions. There's lots of laydown area. I mean, it's a big project, you know, it's going to have a lot of things. So if there's a tree in the middle of the, something that you need to lay down space, that's going to be difficult, even for phase two, because we're going to use that phase two land for the staging to keep everything off the streets for phase one. The the other component is that is that the forest conservation plan, which includes the forest conservation easements and the county required mitigation trees. Remember, different standard for the county. It's a much bigger tree than than the town has. The mitigation trees that we are proposing are also on the forest conservation plan. And those have to be put in place, the forest conservation easements and the, and the mitigation trees have to be put in place the first growing season after the sediment control plan of the first phase is released. So if there aren't supposed to be any mitigation trees in that location where there are maybe existing trees or invasive species or something, I can see how that would be the case. It would have to be on a tree-by-tree basis based upon whether the mitigation tree had to go in in that location in order to satisfy the requirements of the forest conservation plan.
I understand those conditions, okay.
Thank you.
It is just one more thing. It costs money to take down the tree, so we don't want to take it down too soon either.
And I also would think that the residents, of course, who are in phase one, if they could see some trees out when they look toward Connecticut and not just grass, they'd probably be happier too.
I think the residents, the new residents of the town would greatly appreciate that.
Any other? Yes, please, Joy.
So further to the the issue of construction. We've had a number of comments from residents regarding what the impact would be on, you know, residents in the adjacent properties during the construction period. So when trees are removed, they're no longer sucking up water, but then you haven't had an opportunity to install any of the stormwater management technologies that are going to be part of this project. What happens in that case?
As part of the sediment and erosion control plan that we have to put in place before construction starts, it accommodates the water runoff from the site to contain it. The, basically, the entire site, you have to to dig down, build kind of a basin in order to catch that while you're doing the construction before the stormwater management components are put in place during that, during that time. So it it is included in the storm, in the sediment control plan that gets approved by the county and obviously reviewed by the town as well.
Secondly, could you explain, or, and so I don't know if you could explain this, or perhaps Ron could enlighten us in terms of, you know, what are the requirements with respect to forest conservation easement? Like, I thought we couldn't remove any trees from that area at all, but I might have misread that.
You would be better to describe that. I I certainly can, but, okay. Prior to putting in the forest conservation easement, you can. Prior to putting in the forest conservation easement, you can remove trees in order for it to be, to, to set up the easement so that it stays in place. So there are trees that can be removed. Remember, again, it, it's really about the size of the tree. The forest conservation easement is actually regulating that whole area, but it's basing on which trees you can remove by the size. The trees that we're showing here are smaller than the county considers for the forest conservation easement. So that's why these trees can be removed prior to getting the forest conservation easement in place, even though they're going to be in the location of forest conservation easement. To what?
We didn't say there were two trees that the county did look at? Am I mistaken?
In that area.
Okay, so to Joy's question, how can you remove those two trees?
They, I don't know which two trees they are, so I'm not sure.
Could you, Tolbert, could you use the microphone?
The county goes by impact of the root area, and if it's over 30%, they require the tree be removed. We're, we're doing the same thing at Zimmerman Park. We have that. We're going to try to save some trees that they're saying they want removed because of the impact. So, but they, they, those trees are right on the edge of the, of the limits of disturbance. The two, the two big ones in that section. The two 24-inch diameter ones that the county regulates.
Joy, do you feel your question's been answered?
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, my question is, so do we now not have a forest conservation easement yet?
Right. It's not until they go through the whole process, and then, and then it's established.
Okay, so we don't have a forest conservation easement yet, but we do have that area, the setback, which has conveyed with the property that's protected.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a number of steps that you'll need to go through.
And they're county steps.
Oh, they're county steps that include the removal of those two very large trees.
Yes.
Then they will obtain the forest conservation easement, after which time, nothing can be done.
In perpetuity. Anything you, if you plant there, if you prune there, if you take out, have to take out a tree there, you have to contact the county first.
Okay.
Or the park and planning.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, so we have, we have here the 1968 covenant originally, right? And I'm sorry, I'm the newest person on the council, so I wasn't here. I'm going to ask some repetitive questions because I wasn't here when all of this was originally agreed to. And there is a provision in here saying that no built, no structure, parking or loading area shall have a setback of less than 81 feet from the streets that are surrounding it. Is that, are we still?
Thornapple.
They're abiding, they're abiding by that, by all of the buffer rules. So, I have, I do have a question about the Thornapple side of it, which is what we're looking at right now. It's, just aesthetically, for the neighbors who have relied on the kind of thickness of the shade as well as the, you know, the growth that's all along there to provide sort of a nice barrier between the development there and the residential area, because this is, at the end of the day, obviously, a residential area. It, it does, it does occur to me that without all of those big trees, and it really does look to me like that's, that's almost all of them, it's going to look a lot different.
I, I think.
Am I wrong about that? I mean?
One of the challenges is in this, this drawing, you don't see all the trees. You only see the ones that are being removed. There's probably four, 400 trees in that stand right there that will be saved and protected in perpetuity.
Do you, do you have any sense of how many canopy trees will be left there? If these, if these all go away?
Tolbert, could you use the microphone?
That, nothing's going to be taken out on the, on the, on the north side. It's all on the south side next to where the construction is going to occur. So.
I'm not sure what that, that, that's not how that map looks to me. I don't know. So I don't know what you mean. Because there's a lot of trees marked for removal on that north side.
Along the, the sidewalk.
I understand what the north side is.
No, but you need to put up the other plan, Todd, that you had up before, because it shows the, the ones where not with that one.
Yeah.
So those are, those are trees that were in the survey for the town ordinance, anything over 24-inch circumference, 24 or more circumference. So those are all also inside the, I mean, there's a, a forest conservation buffer between.
Right.
So, yes. So it, I don't know if you've, I don't, I was over there the other day just to look at this point, because we were saying when things are taken down, how it's going to look. And the, the, the forest there is pretty thick, plus it's, it sits higher from the, from that cut through, it raises about six feet by the time you get to Connecticut, six or eight feet. So by the time you're in the middle of the street, the, the, the top of the hills, like it chin heights or so, I mean, that's also buffering what's going to be cut out on the other side of that.
So that, so that's what you're saying when we're talking about the fact that this map doesn't really show what this is going to look like?
No.
In that whole white area.
That whole white area is woods. It's all woods, it's undergrowth, it's, it's, if you go out there and look tomorrow, you'll see it's all covered.
That is, that's extremely helpful. I, I, I suspect, I don't, I can't speak for any of the people who submitted comments, but upon reading the comments, I think that there were some people who interpreted this map as being a representation of all the trees.
No. Well, I mean, that's the, but that is the easement that they're setting up, so that has to.
I got you.
I mean, if there's no trees, there's no easement, so it has, there has to be trees there.
That's very helpful.
Okay.
Sorry for the obvious questions. I appreciate it.
Any other questions right now? Okay, I'd like to open it up to public comments. We've received also a lot of emails and comments and have read them all, but anyone that would like either online or here in the room? Please, if you'd like to come up and.
My name is Mike Kelleher. I'm at 4004 Thornapple. And I would like to address the question of the existing 1968 covenant, which appears to be fairly strict with respect, respect to any, I'm reading this directly from the document. Trees or shrubbery along Thornapple Street shall assume responsibility for maintaining said plantings and shall replace the same when necessary. And so it, there is an existing, it's not a conservation easement, but it is a binding agreement between 4H and any subsequent owners and the town. So if, if any trees would be taken down, that would, in this particular one-acre parcel along Thornapple, that will be in violation of this existing arrangement. And it can be enforced or can be enjoined, I think, I'm not sure what exactly that term means, but presumably someone can take an action, including the town or any resident of the town. So I think with respect to the question earlier about whether or not those trees can be taken down prior to the conservation easement, I think that this, this agreement, this 1968 agreement appears to say that they cannot, which raises another question for me, the second question I'll be, would like to ask the opinion of the experts here who are, who know about these kinds of agreements is the definition of a forest, this is a forest conservation easement proposal, and we're very grateful for that. And we, we think the developer's been extraordinarily solicitous of the neighbors and thoughts about this. But one of the things that I, I'm reading and hearing about is that they, that they want to remove dead trees. And a forest is not a park. A forest is a habitat for bird species. By the way, the 67th bird has been identified on the site now. On eBird, anyone can find it. It's called the 4H Chevy Chase site. So it's, it's a significant site, and there's lots of wildlife there. And dead trees, they may be unsightly for someone who's looking for a certain aesthetic look, but they are important habitat. So I just wanted to point that out and ask the experts again, you know, whether or not those will be maintained, because I think people perceive a forest to be something other than a, than what, what it really is if it's a habitat. So those are my two questions.
Thank you. Ron, would you like to comment about the, the covenant?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, so the covenant is subject to interpretation. Allow me to read the whole covenant. It provides, "The grantor shall preserve the existing major growth of trees and shrubbery along Thornapple Street, and shall assume responsibility for maintaining said plantings, and shall replace the same when necessary." So that was written in April of 1968. It is subject to different interpretations. One interpretation is that you only must preserve what existed and was deemed major growth in 1968, which I don't believe we can accurately determine. Also, only those trees and shrubs deemed major growth need to be preserved. That term's not defined. And also, along Thornapple, only those trees and shrubs along Thornapple Street need to be preserved. And, you know, along's not defined either. So we do have to apply some reasonable interpretation in that, in that covenant. Again, one interpretation requires us to determine what existed and what was major growth as of 1968, and is it along Thornapple Street? And, you know, given that a forest conservation easement area is proposed for that location, and one could conclude that the covenant is going to be upheld, and it may be reasonable to conclude that the, the growth of trees and shrubbery has actually increased since 1968. Perhaps Dr. Feather could offer an opinion there?
Please.
I have to do the math. How far back is 1968? So 70, 60?
55.
50, yeah. So, 57, 6, well, yeah, so there's probably, I mean, a lot of these trees are 14-inch, 16-inch. So those are probably saplings or not even trees that long ago. So that kind of answers that question. The other question about dead trees in the conservation area. They're only removing dead trees in the building footprint. And part of the conservation area is to leave it natural. So the only time you would remove something is if it's hazardous to one of the properties. And then you would need permission from the planning commission to do that.
Right.
So that's the only time you'd remove a dead or dying tree, once the, the, the conservation is set, the easement is set.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, Deborah, please come up.
I'm Deborah Volmer. I live at 720244th Street, the other side of town from where this is happening, but I'm concerned about the natural environment in our town generally. Someone on the town listserv posted some photos of a hawk and, and an owl. And, and I know that, I'm not sure if that was the exact area that we're talking about here, but I, but I think it was in the general area for sure. And that's important that we have, and not just the hawks and the owls, but the other wildlife. I, based on what I've heard tonight, I have a great reluctance to see any, any healthy tree go down. I realize that whenever there's a construction project, there's got to be some sacrifice. But I wonder if the council and the town at large really has enough information to go on right now. We saw the map of the trees to come down, and then we had the explanation, but there are a lot of other trees between those trees that are going to come down and Thornapple Street. And sitting here, I, you know, I don't know how many of those trees are mature and important to the surrounding environment and the wildlife, and, and how much maybe just undergrowth. And I think we need, we need either another map which shows some, at least the major tree, maybe not all the trees, but the, the major trees that are going to be left along Thornapple, and perhaps some photographs of, of what's there with an indication of among the trees that are there, what's going to come down. I, I'm just not sure, for an issue this important, I'm not sure the council has enough information before it right now. Obviously, people can go out and take a look at the property, but I get the feeling that maybe people haven't, people on the council, maybe, some maybe have and some maybe haven't. And I know people are busy and have family and work and other things. But I, I think there needs to be more information before the, the council as to exactly which, you know, how many of these trees between the zone where they're coming down and Thornapple, how many are going to come down? And I, to get more of a view of just what the impact is, I don't think that the information is fully before the, the council or the residents in our town right now. To make a decision this important, we're talking about 87 trees. That's a lot. Okay, probably other people want to talk, so I'll sit down.
Thank you, Deborah. I, I do also want to emphasize that there's three acres that is going to be designated a forest conservation area, the 81-foot Thornapple setback. There aren't any trees that are being touched there. That's a lot already. The, the 87 that we were talking about are within the, the limits of disturbance as it relates to the construction area. There's a full inventory in the documentation's been provided to all the residents, the species of the tree, the, the size, the health of the tree, the relative health of the tree, if you will, whatever designation that is. And it's all listed in, in all of that. It's a lot of material, in all fairness, to read, but a lot of documentation has been collected. This is based on a, a previous meeting where we had asked for a full inventory of the trees because we anticipated that there would be questions about what species of trees, what's the relative health of it, and exactly where are they located. So I would say that, that we do have a lot of information. So, thank you for that. Some, a couple, few hands are raised. I'd like to, oh, sorry, I'll just go online just a second and I'll come back. Catherine Semsor, please, just for the record stating your name and address.
Of course. My name is Catherine Semsor. My permanent residence is at 4015 Thornapple Street. Just by way of credentials prior to my comments, I have 20 years of experience working in natural resource management, and I'm currently finishing up my PhD in wildlife biology. I've got a number of concerns with this proposal. First and foremost, you know, as was noted at the beginning of this meeting, there has been a long collaborative process to develop the approved plan. And I have to wonder why the issues that are being alleged by the applicant were not identified during the initial planning process, because this seems like a deviation that is significant. Because this seems like a deviation that is significant from the planning process. If we can identify these issues today, we could have identified them yesterday as well. Secondly, I I do agree that I think we need more information on on what the impact of this proposal might be. We're hearing about trees, but a tree is not a tree is not a tree. Different trees have different values. And while the proposal from the applicant to replace the removed trees with two hundred other trees may sound generous, there are stark differences between mature trees and immature trees in terms of the ecological values they provide. Now, we've talked about root systems. And I think we need a lot more information on what the disruption and potential removal of these root systems will be on drainage and stormwater on the surrounding properties. We also heard about the owls and and the hawks and and they're great. You know, they they add to our quality of life here in Chevy Chase. But they they play a more important purpose than that. They help with rodent control, which is which is pest control. And similarly, there's roosting bats in mature trees potentially. They also play a role in insect control. Similarly, migratory songbirds, which use these trees to nest, play a role in insect control. And I think we need more information on what the potential impacts of these tree removals might have on these ecosystem services that are currently being provided by the property. We also need a better understanding of the microclimate impacts of the removal of mature trees before we proceed with making a decision. And, you know, we need a better understanding of of the impacts. Excuse me. On on the removal of mature trees, on the permeation of light and noise pollution from the development itself onto surrounding properties. Those large mature trees do help to block sound. They do help to block light. And removing them could have impacts on on people's quality of life adjacent to the properties. Finally, you know, I I think that we need to proceed cautiously and from an informed perspective. And I would encourage the council to table making a decision until we have more information available on what the potential impact of following through with this this request might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like Dave or Talbert? Todd would like to respond just a moment, sorry, just a second, sorry. To the to those comments, do you all want to respond to those comments? No, I just wasn't sure because there were some questions. Okay, Lou Evangelista, please.
Good evening. My name is Lou Evangelista. I live at forty four oh two Wall Street, quite a ways away from the subject development. But I feel that you should treat me as a canary in the in the coal mine, the man on the street. I just dropped in. I thought I was going to hear about two hundred trees and eighty seven, which were not approved. And the discussion this evening has been about nine trees, a map that I can't decipher for people who are zooming in. It was totally frustrating identifying the trees, knowing who which ones you were talking to. So I defer to the speakers before me, especially Catherine, who gave a wonderful dissertation, a mini dissertation on the subject. And I I agree, we don't have enough information. I, as I say, the man on the street is totally confused. I don't know what's happening. I don't think there's enough information. I wasn't satisfied with the answers from Talbert, even though I I recognize his expertise, but I wasn't satisfied. I think Deborah Volmer made a very cogent comment and the other resident on Thornapple, the gentleman, I agree that he made some very good points. So I think we need more information. As I said, I'm very disappointed with the the information going along. I don't know how the town council could make a decision tonight, and I think it should be left for further discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was next in the queue, if that's okay.
Sorry, Jennifer, why don't?
Jennifer Barnett, thirty nine fifteen Thornapple Street. So so there's a category here, tree removals. It says trees that are to be removed that are not canopy trees that are dead, dying or hazardous. And I was just curious, you know, the definition of hazardous? Because looking at specifically tree three sixty eight, if that tree falls, it's it's, you know, probably just as likely to fall on my house versus, say, the Corso development. So do you know, you know, which trees are dead versus which trees are hazardous?
I believe that's demarcated, but I want to defer to. Think they're looking up number sixty eight.
Three sixty eight.
Can you, can you, it's an ash, okay?
Three sixty eight's an ash that's along the sidewalk.
Right.
So and it's not very, you probably know what the tree looks like yourself because you live there. So that that tree's hazardous to the sidewalk. It's it's not in very good shape.
But is it, so it's not dead or dying, it's just hazardous? So what is?
Those are separate. Well, I mean, if a tree's dead, it's hazardous. So that's inclusive. Dying may or not, may or may not be hazardous.
Yeah, so I guess that's my question, right? Dead, dying hazardous. So what's the definition of?
It's not, all those three things aren't inclusive. They're, they can be separate or inclusive. Like I say, a dead tree is hazardous because it's dead, can fall over. A dying tree may or not be, may or not, may or may not be hazardous. Also, a perfectly good looking, healthy tree can be hazardous depending on conditions in the tree, such as hollow at the bottom or hollow in the trunk. But it could all be leafed and look healthy. So that can be another category of hazardous besides being dead.
When you looked at that tree?
That, yes, that tree was by the tree I'm trying to save.
Thanks. Yeah, I would, I would just say, Mr. Feather, to your point about the the shoulder height barrier, that's not applicable to my house. You know, taking down, you know, three sixty eight, three sixty five, three sixty nine, which, again, if these trees fall, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna fall on the new buildings or they're gonna fall, you know, on on a residence house. So I, you know, I just don't, I just don't see why we have to go, you know, that that close to the sidewalk. Like, are we going to do that for all of the sidewalks in the town? I just don't know why we have to get like that close to the sidewalk with respect to three sixty five, three sixty eight and three sixty nine.
Three, three fifty nine or three sixty nine?
Three sixty five, three six eight and three six nine.
Yeah, three six nine's another one I think we're trying to save.
Okay.
Three six eight is the ash and three six five is the pine we're trying to save.
Right, and three, and right, so.
Yeah, it does, that's where the sewer line's going to run through. So we don't know how wide that's going to be yet. That's why we're, we're putting a condition on it.
I don't see it either.
We're trying to follow this, but on the map that we have, we see three six five, we see three seventy one.
Nothing in between.
Nothing in between, so.
Which map are you?
The map you had on most of the time tonight.
It's part of the approved tree removal permit application. And it has the list of all of the tree, the whole inventory.
There's a list, but we're looking for where they are.
Oh, no, she's looking.
I'm looking and there's a map and it's the document. So Todd, if you could.
Three six five. Yep, there's three six five. And three six eight and three sixty nine are not on this map, but they're, they are on the map that was provided by the town. Thank you.
So Todd, if you can put up there inventory map, the original inventory map. Man, can we get it any bigger?
That was attached to the application.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was one of the click through.
So this is three sixty eight's the ash. This one? Three sixty five's the pine that we're trying to save.
And three six nine.
Let's see what three sixty nine is.
Is that an appeal request?
Okay. It is in poor condition. So the one I was thinking of is three seventy one we're saving. Three sixty nine's a holly that's in poor condition. So three sixty eight's the ash, three sixty five's the pine, three sixty nine's a holly in poor condition. And then this is all marked because there's a possible sewer line going through here, sanitary sewer. But we don't know how wide that cut has to be yet. That's still in the planning phase. So that's why we're trying to be flexible on this. The other one we're trying to save here is four eighty nine, which is a beech tree here.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand the desire to be proactive when it comes to hazardous trees. But I mean, I don't know. I just don't, I just don't understand.
To let you, maybe to make make it a little clearer. If if I I look at all the trees in the town, I also look at the trees on that buffer once in a while to see if any of them need to come down. And we've had trees that have had to come down on that Thornapple side before over the past twenty years. So I'm always on the lookout for hazardous trees. And a hazardous tree doesn't have to be dead or dying. It can be a a perfectly healthy looking tree. So I don't know if that's the question you're asking, why we're 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 breaking these down into three categories?
Yeah, I didn't understand how hazardous was defined. I I guess I have a better understanding of that. But but even if, you know, just looking at three sixty five and three sixty eight, it's so close to the sidewalk and 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 seemingly far from the new building on the Corso development.
This is where a sewer.
But it's the sewer line.
These are marked because the sewer line's gonna, you can't see me pointing. A sewer line is going to go between three sixty nine and three sixty eight. Possibly, it might be something WSSC wants to abandon. And they're going to put the sewer service in another place. Or they might use this to put in the sewer service, part of the sewer service for the development. That hasn't been, that hasn't been decided yet.
So should it stay until that decision is made?
Say again?
Should the tree not be removed until that decision is made?
Yes, it's in the protect, it's the intent to save it. That's what that.
They're gonna, they're gonna go no matter what.
Yes.
But but some are intentional to be saved, depending on how large or sorry, wide, whatever the the sewer line needs to be. And this is not a decision, my understanding, that developer is, it's WSSC. And having dealt with WSSC for the Zimmerman Park project, they take their time in making their decisions. It's not that there's like new information or things that should have been known before. It's just they make their decision when they make their decision.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Adam was on the line as well.
Yes, hi, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I had sent my questions in advance, so hopefully there's some familiarity with the town council as well as Corso.
Address, please, for the record?
Oh, absolutely. Seven zero one two Meadow Lane, I apologize for that. So I sent a number of questions in advance and I was hoping to walk through those questions in sequence. If Corso or the town has quick answers to those questions, that would be great. If not, I prefer the answers be either provided in writing or we defer the decision on this tree removal plan until those answers are provided. Is it okay to walk through the questions?
Sure.
Okay, so I, this is in reference to the the map. It's the third section of the map. And it's Meadow Lane. And it's the southern corner of Meadow Lane that is the area of concern. The first question is, in that southern corner, it looks like there's a drainage pipe that's going to be installed. And it looks like there's, that's not the correct, I don't think that's, yeah. Oh, sorry, yep. The, it it looks like there are about ten trees that are slated for removal. And do we have any data on the the amount of stormwater runoff that's going to be created by the removal of these trees? Both both in the near term and the long term?
We do not.
Okay, I think it would be helpful to understand that before we approve the removal of of that. And from my understanding, go ahead, I'll pause.
Yeah, just just to clarify, there's an existing storm line. There's actually two storm lines in that current location right now. And the reason for those trees being removed is that has to be replaced in order to accommodate the stormwater management, to accommodate the hundred year flood and so on and so forth. That all needs to get updated on the site to be compliant with current regulations. So that, yeah, that already, that already has two lines in it and it needs to be replaced basically to the point where three thirty one is. It doesn't continue past that. The line past that is going to stay as it is through to Meadow.
And all, and this map just denotes the trees that are, I'm going to get this wrong, twenty four inches or greater in circumference.
Correct, that are under appeal because they are not dead, dying or hazardous.
So there may be, in order to install that pipe, there may be many other trees that are less than twenty four inches that might get clear cut.
Correct.
Do we know how many?
We do not.
Okay, it would be helpful to have that information regarding the number of trees that are less than twenty four inches. The, so you explained the reason to install the drain pipe because the the existing one is not sufficient. Has a study been done to determine that the existing one is insufficient?
Yes, it's actually been video camered with a little drone that goes down there. And it's been profiled and reviewed by the the county stormwater and we've provided it to the town as well.
And and that's, that's to accommodate a a large flood?
Yes, it's to accommodate the stormwater that will be running, that runs off the site. Yes.
Okay, um, so you've calculated the amount from a three month storm event and a ten month storm event?
I don't know the actual months of storms. I I think they're in years, but.
Well, I I think the 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 town requirements are to calculate a three month storm event in terms of the town drainage plan and then a ten year storm event. Is that accurate, Dave?
Yeah, I guess it's the three, for the town, which doesn't apply on this property.
We'll, we'll get to that in a minute.
Three month storm event or the difference in runoff from the pre-construction and post-construction conditions for the ten year storm event.
Okay. Is, has an alternative location, since the current pipe is is not operational or will not be operational, has an alternative location for the pipe been considered that would not result in as many trees being removed?
Yeah, there is no other location for this pipe. It is at the the point in the site where it needs to be to drain as part of the bigger, bigger system that is contained in the town and throughout the county.
Has an alternative approach been thought of to install the pipe that would not require? I think it's at least a fifteen foot buffer on either side of where the pipe is being installed.
I can't tell you that we're making a fifteen foot buffer. We were asked to identify the trees that are within fifteen feet of the conservation easement. And that's what's showing on this plan.
And those are slated to be taken down.
Uh, the, the ones that are shown on this plan, uh, yes, except there are a couple, I think there are also three, twenty eight, three, twenty five that are also intent to save.
To the, to the, uh, town residents' earlier point, is there a reason why we can't leave those trees standing in, in that they're gonna be part of the forest, uh, conservation area?
As part of construction, they, the, the roots will not survive that.
No, I understand that, but, but it'd still be a dead tree which would serve as a habitat in the forest area.
I, uh, I'm not quite sure of whether you can, if it, if it dies, I think you have to take it out if it's not in the easement already. But I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Can the tab provide any clarity on that?
I mean, I guess we typically get complaints about standing dead trees. Um, you know, I guess we wouldn't require that it be removed. Um, some of them will have to be removed because the trunk is in the area of the trench in the over dig for this storm drain pipe. Um, you know, I don't know how the budding residents would feel about having large dead trees immediately next to their properties.
I don't think there would be any feeling that they next to anyone's property, at least three, thirty, four, fifty nine, four, sixty, three, twenty nine. It, it looks like there's a pretty big, a couple hundred feet between, uh, neighbor properties. There.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I guess our practice has been to, you know, approve the removal of dead trees and I guess if, if Corso decided you tried to save them and park and planning was okay with it, I guess they could be preserved, but that hasn't been our practice in administering our tree program.
Thank you. The, my understanding is the town ordinance requires any trees that have been approved for removal to have a conspicuous sign placed on them. Could we have some signs placed on the trees that have been approved for removal, particularly those that are visible from the street so we could actually see which trees are gonna be removed?
Yeah, we talked, uh, to the town attorney about this, um, and because of the sort of inaccessibility of the site, you know, and the complaints that we've been getting about trespassers on the site, we felt that it was prudent to not post the trees because the site isn't really accessible and, you know, walking through there is pretty dangerous, um, with.
I, I was speaking of the trees that, I was speaking about the trees that were visible from the street that wouldn't require, um, uh, trespassing.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we could post them if, if directed to do so.
It, well, it, you are directed to do so by the town ordinance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble figuring out what's actually visible.
Okay, could, could someone from the town look into what is visible from the street and mark those?
What did you say? They were marked?
They were marked. Could you repeat your comment?
Uh, all these numbers on the maps are, that's the, there's a tag on the tree with that number.
But it's supposed to be conspicuously marked. How big is that tag?
It's, I mean, it's marked.
It's the size of a quarter. So I'm just saying.
The tree, it's pretty conspicuous. You can read the tag.
Okay. The, the bigger question I have is, I'd like some understanding, so from Corso, if they could confirm that they plan to develop the property solely for institutional use?
Yes.
Okay, because there were some comments made to the county that it was a mixed use residential and you were moving away from institutional use.
The, the county has some very peculiar definitions of things. It's, it is a senior living facility.
Which is deemed institutional use. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I believe there were folks in here as well. I wanted to given up. Sir, please.
Richard Clay, thirty-nine, seventeen Woodbine Street. I would like to second the comments by the lady who talked about why all this stuff wasn't brought up earlier when this product project was first proposed. I find that this is a major change to the environment of that area. And I, I find it, um, disturbing that all of these issues weren't taken care of prior to the approval of the, of the project.
Thank you. Deedon.
Deedon Ingram, forty-three, twelve Willow Lane. I would like to add my agreement with that last comment. That was one of my first thoughts when I looked at this the other day that, you know, they'd asked for over two hundred trees to come down. They got permission for over a hundred and there are eighty-seven left. And it, the reasons given are, you know, they're putting in the sewer line, they're putting in the water line, et cetera, and it just seems like some of it would have been known and it would have been nicer if it had come up earlier in this process. Um, I'm not sure why it's coming up this late. Some of them I could see, maybe you don't know, you don't know exactly where the sewer line's going, but other things they did know. And then the eight trees that Barney brought up, I'm not sure why we would need to give permission at this point for them to be taken down. If they're dead or dying or hazardous after the construction is done, they can come back and to the town and the county will give them a permission. They won't even have to come before the council. It's just, you know, it's all there to say, yep, dead, dying hazardous, it can come down. The other thing, I've been told that you can root prune large mature trees in certain ways prior to construction activities. And it can improve the chances of the tree surviving. So I would suggest that maybe that could be looked into to, to try to improve the chances of those trees surviving the construction. And finally, all of these trees that they're gonna be replanting, particularly the, these large mature twenty-four inch and above canopy trees. I'd really like to see something be replanted there that's not a thin little sap, sapling. So perhaps one of the conditions for removing some of these trees that you give them permission to remove might be some sort of size conditions that a really reasonably large tree go in there. So it doesn't take sixty years for anybody to be able to notice it's even there.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah.
Yes, hey, yes, thank you. Um, wanted to make a, a brief comment. Um, I'm at seven, one, oh, two Meadow Lane. Um, and I am a birder and, uh, I can hear, uh, particularly migratory birds in the spring and fall, um, from that patch of trees. And it's a real delight to hear various warblers and other birds that you really do not hear in this neighborhood or in any of the, uh, you know, close in Chevy Chase, uh, close into DC, you know, Chevy Chase neighborhoods. Um, it's a special, it's a special spot and on the Cornell, uh, Lab of Ornithology's, um, database eBird, which is a, uh, a global database where birders can input species they've seen in various locations. Um, the location where we're talking about with all these trees to be removed potentially, um, is the only quote unquote and designated hotspot of bird, of birding, um, in Chevy Chase. And there have been sixty-seven different species of birds, um, identified in that space that we're talking about since twenty, twenty-one. And, uh, so as someone who, you know, cares a lot about the environment and, and also how beautiful this neighborhood is in part because of the tree canopy, um, that we're talking about tonight, um, I just want to make a plea that these eighty-seven remaining, uh, trees in question, please be considered, please keep them. Um, they're so important for migratory birds, resident birds. In fact, today, a barred owl and a red shouldered hawk were both photographed in, you know, in the, in, among these trees. So, um, there's a lot of resident birds that depend on this too, and I really think it's important to consider um, that as part of the environmental impact, um, of what we're talking about. And I think removing the number of trees that are coming out already, but in addition, hope, you know, these eighty-seven, it's just, would be such an impoverishment of the town's natural environment. So please, I hope you will keep them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? Yes, please. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Molly Moynihan and, um, I wanted to comment on a couple of things first.
Just sorry.
Oh, uh, for, uh, forty-four, twenty Ridge Street.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to comment on the covenant which was raised. I actually lived on Thornapple Street at forty, oh, five Thornapple Street in nineteen seventy-four. And I can't comment on what the trees were like in nineteen sixty-eight, but I can tell you that there were a lot of trees and that we played in those trees. And then in fact, I'm kind of here today on behalf of those trees. Uh, because I think that there were, um, that it's not, you know, they were there and they've always been there. I'm also a lawyer and I kind of disagree with the position that was taken by the town manager on that covenant. I think it's pretty clear and I actually think that there's a litigation risk just for what it's worth. Um, but what I really wanted to say besides the emotion, uh, of the trees, which I agree with everything that's been said with respect to the birds and everything else, is that can we try, it's always troubling when you get this sort of like, oh, well, we have to take the tree down because, um, we're gonna develop on top of it. So we're gonna put a sidewalk here. So oops, that's gonna kill the roots. Tree needs to go down. It seems to me that we should try as much as possible to preserve every single tree among the trees that we're discussing right now, uh, either because it doesn't have to come down right now, it can come down in two years. Either because perhaps you could build a permeable sidewalk or you could tree prune or in any number of things that can be done to mitigate uh, the need to take those trees down. And I would like to see the town council ask Corso, who, you know, I may very well move into your place when the time comes, but I'd like to see if we could work a little bit harder to mitigate the need to take these trees down because, um, I do think that they contribute to the overall quality of life here in Chevy Chase. And I can tell you, when I was a kid, there were a lot more canopy trees than there are today. And then the final thing, I don't know if we can use AI or some other system to actually show, because I think a lot of people are asking about that for marking the trees or whatever, to show what it would actually look like if you took these trees down. I imagine that you could do that. And so that you could visually see, particularly doing this before the, the, uh, uh, the foliage comes down, so that you could visually see, it, it's either true or not true that you won't really notice that much or that you would really notice it. And it seems to me we could easily mock that up in today's world. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak to you.
Okay, is there anyone in the room? Anyone else in the room? Like to make comments? Anyone online? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. So I saw some notes of someone not being able to find their virtual hand, um, raising the hand. Okay, um, Grant, would you like to, to respond to some of the comments of? Okay.
There was a lot there and, and I appreciate all the, all, all the comments. Um, one, I'd like to address is that, that, that this was not kind of known until today and, uh, I, I do want to bring attention to the work that we've done over now is two and almost two and a half years on this project. Um, we, we always knew that there were some trees that were going to have to come down as part of the, the progress of making this, um, this project. And, um, we've tried our best to, to do as little as, as possible um, with the context of creating a pedestrian friendly environment with, uh, trying to follow the, the zoning rules and the building code rules and the setback rules and, um, you know, tr- trying to be the best stewards that we can. Um, uh, and, and I think we've, we've done a, a fairly good job. Um, we are replanting trees, uh, so that new growth can happen. Uh, the, the trees that we, uh, are planting are not saplings. They are three and four inch trees, so they are substantial. Um, uh, and we are taking a, as required by the forest conservation plan measures to do, uh, root pruning, uh, on the trees that are to remain so that we can keep them and those where we're only impacting the roots ten percent or fifteen percent, we can prune those roots. We, we have a tree downtown DC right now that is huge, uh, that we've been pruning for three years, um, and maintaining it every year. So we, we do care about the trees. We do have that, that capability. So, um, I, I, I think this is gonna be a great project. I think that the, the trees that we will be planting will add some diversity to the site. Um, and, um, I ask for your support in the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, um, we've heard a lot this evening. Oh, I apologize. Yes, of course.
Um, just looking at the map, how many, I saw the, the number of trees gets up to over a thousand that were identified. How many trees are on the site right now? That, that the town, that town has identified?
Yeah, I guess as part of our review, we did not require an inventory of all of the trees.
I understand. We didn't, we didn't require the trees that are inside of the easements other than within the fifteen foot border. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's hundreds of trees that are in those easement areas.
But just, just in terms of the, since I saw the number on the map got up to a thousand, are we talking about over a thousand?
No, um, I think those are inventory numbers that were taken from different sets of data, so they aren't consecutively numbered.
I see.
Um, and, you know, we have the inventory of trees within the limits of disturbance and those within fifteen feet and that was two hundred and thirteen?
Two hundred and fifteen.
Trees regulated by the town, twenty-four inches in circumference or greater within the limits of disturbance or within fifteen feet of the limits.
Right, okay, that's, okay.
Is the only inventory that, that we required.
And just to go with it, so those are the ones in total that are and of those, how many are coming down? Just review. I want to make sure I get this statistics right.
I guess, depending on what happens, uh, with the appeal hearing, um, it was a hundred and Yeah, there were a hundred and six that have been approved for removal, uh, based on their species or condition. Uh, there are seventy-eight that are denied, that are not proposed to be removed with intent to save. Uh, there are nine that are preserved, that are in appealed for removal with intent to save. And then there are eighteen that are within fifteen feet of the limits of disturbance that can be preserved.
If, that can be preserved.
Correct.
And then there's some that are.
And then there are many that are outside of that area.
So the, the ones that are inside that fifteen foot that are coming down are part of that seventy-eight. I just want to make sure I'm counting it right.
Yeah, there's seventy-eight that are denied and appealed for removal. Nine that are denied with intent to save and then within that inventory, there are eighteen to be preserved.
But obviously those are really at the margin at the buffer side, obviously. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Hey Irene. Irene, it's Shirley. I have a question. Can you hear me?
I, I do, yes, so.
Oh, is there a queue? I'm sorry. Is there more people wanting to talk?
Yeah, we, we closed the public comment, so, um, we did receive.
When did you do that?
We.
About ten minutes ago.
Yeah, a few minutes ago. Um.
Do you think you could reopen it for one second? Because I think this is a really important question. I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, you know, procedures for these kinds of meetings. It's just, I was thinking as, as Barney was questioning, um, about the trees. And so. And so may I ask my question?
Sure, I'll reopen public comments.
I'm so sorry. Not that I'm prejudging any of the results, I would really like to understand what would be the situation if the appeal about the trees was denied? Like, what could Corso do? And I don't mean, oh, we're going to go to court, but in terms of the development itself, would it, would it make it like impossible for them to do what they want to do? Or what's the real-life implications? Because that's sort of like part of what we're also balancing.
Okay. Grant.
The, thank you for your question. Yes, the site plan that we came up with, the building designs, the forest conservation easements were all predicated on this happening at a point in time. Without it, the project does not move forward, period. Stop.
Okay, so that's the bottom line, is it?
So the question that you asked was based on the two and a half years of planning that has taken place to put through a local map amendment to work with our community on the height of the buildings, the preservation of the conservation forest areas, the various county requirements, and there's probably other requirements that, you know, right? All of that balance to take place does look at each, we asked for an inventory to take a look and make sure we understood what was happening with every tree. And yes, there is it's a question asked and answered. Yeah, so.
Right, so in a way, the town council doesn't really have any choice but to approve it, is what I'm hearing.
Well, I think that what residents may not realize is that these conversations have been going on for two, publicly for two and a half years. With residents, you've been on, you have been on many calls, as have other residents, and each aspect of stormwater management, tree preservation, building, site, site where they would actually be physically placed on the lot, the materials of the building, the ability to maintain ways, walkways, so that there was a connectivity with the town, since they are going to be, the residents are going to be town residents. All these discussions have been occurring with the town council, with the developers and with residents for the last two and a half years.
Okay, but you did agree to have a hearing and comments were solicited. And now what you're saying is, well, you've been doing this for two and a half years and you know, it's basically a done deal and you should have been there earlier. And that may be true. I just want to understand what's happening.
I don't think that's an appropriate way of saying that, but I'm just trying to say that there's, it's not as if it's the one information, one conversation this evening.
Right, okay. No, I get you.
I'm sorry, because I see that Catherine has raised her hand. I I'm trying to close down public comments here.
I'll be really quick, but yeah, the conversations have been happening for two and a half years, but now at the 11th hour, Corso is proposing 87 variances to the plan that was agreed upon. But I guess my question is, which I would appreciate Corso's representative answering, is the question of tree survivability in relation to the construction. What steps is Corso prepared to commit to, to increase the likelihood of tree survivability in the course of construction?
Sure, thank you. We are bound by the approved forest conservation plan, which has a very extensive, long list of protection measures, including fencing and signage and pruning and monitoring and of any trees that are on the site during construction. It is a very rigorous and quite expensive undertaking to do. So it is part of the forest conservation plan, and I can't go through each of the components of it, but it's very extensive.
I understand that. One follow-up question. Who will be conducting the monitoring?
Yeah, I guess just to add on to that, part of the town's urban forest ordinance also requires protection of trees during construction. So in addition to park and planning and their forest conservation staff who will put and enforce their forest conservation easements and tree protection requirements, there will also be a town tree protection plan that is developed once we get the construction drawings for the actual construction. And that will be there's a process, neighbors are notified, there's going to be a construction management plan that the town puts in place. And the tree protection plans of the town will be made a condition of that. And that will be overseen by the town staff and the town arborist in addition to the requirements that the county has.
Just one other step, we're required to have an arborist on staff to look at these trees during construction. We will also have Mr. Feather as part of reviewing those trees as well. So there's actually two foresters or arborists that are going to be on there. WSSI is our arborist.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comments are closed. Let's, we've had a lot to consider this evening, and I'm happy to hear any thoughts. Whoever would like to start. Go ahead, Joy.
Yeah, I sat for over three years as the liaison to the Climate and Environment Committee. And when we were discussing what was going to happen with the 7100 Connecticut Avenue property, among the concerns that many of the members of the committee had, had to do with the fact that we knew we were going to have to, that trees were going to have to come down, even if Corso were just going to re, you know, rebuild the buildings that are currently on the spot right now. When you do construction, we knew that we would have to have trees come down. But at that time, we also acknowledged that it was way too premature for us to know which trees would come down. We really appreciated the comments that the Kelleher's provided back then, because they kind of did their own inventory of trees and the wildlife on the space, and that was really greatly appreciated. And I think, you know, having gone through the long process that Corso has needed to go through with respect to local map amendments and site plans and all these other plans, we're now at the point where the rubber is going to meet the road and where trees have been identified that need to come down so they can build the buildings that they need to build. And so I think that maybe that bit of context we could have provided at the beginning of this hearing, just to make sure that, you know, residents don't think that this was just sort of, you know, dropped in our laps at this point when it could have been considered earlier. We did have an opportunity to walk the property when Corso acquired it. And we walked through the areas that are, you know, that were part of the Thornapple easement, as well as the parts of the property that we understand will fall into the forest conservation easement once it's created. We talked about vegetative screening for certain residents who may be impacted by the light that comes from the new buildings. And I think Corso has also indicated in their application the number of trees that they intend to plant on the property. I think we go through this every time we approve, you know, an application for removal of one or two trees on properties where people are building new homes or they're building additions. I mean, we just, I think it was our last council meeting, we had a case where someone wanted to move just a few trees and it, you know, it was really quite traumatic because these were beautiful, beautiful trees. So, you know, I don't want to make light of the fact that, that, you know, this is going to be a loss. However, you know, there's a property that's changed hands. And, you know, throughout this process, they have seemed to have complied with, you know, a lot of the requests that our residents have made. And so, you know, I look forward to a robust discussion and a, you know, really careful consideration of what we have before us.
Would anyone else like to make comments?
I have some thoughts. Joy, I second very much what you just said. You know, we are in terms of preservation of space in the town, this is absolutely as best a plan as we could get. Three acres are being set aside for forest reserve. Let's, you know, we'll go back. At the very outset of this, the gravest concern that residents had was it'd be a through road with single-family homes on 12 acres of land with perhaps a little bit of a buffer on the side toward Meadow Avenue, toward Meadow Lane. And what we're ending up with is a retirement community with three acres preserved. Whereas part of the conditions, exactly as you say, there are sidewalks that'll have connectivity to the town, which could go both ways. Also, the developers cut the density of the plans by lowering the height on the outside on three sides facing our town, which is significant and has an economic impact. And we basically did know that a large number of trees would have to come down. There's just no way they could build because the trees are in the where the side of the buildings are. So I do agree that, I feel badly and I don't know whether there is a miscommunication, but frankly, for the great bulk of these trees, their fate was sealed at the time that the plans were approved, that put the buildings where the buildings are going to be. I would say the value of this hearing, and it remains valuable, it's not like this is all just a done deal, is you're exploring the margins. You're trying to understand whether everything that can be done to save trees at the margin is being done. All right, that's what this is really about. It's not about the trees that are sitting right where, you know, a building is going to be. That tree has to come down. We're talking about the trees at the margin. And we, as a council, gave instruction to the town staff and to Dr. Feather to carefully review and try to determine what trees in the perimeter could be saved. And obviously, there's been some difference of opinion, but a number of those trees, and thank you, Talbert, have now in fact been marked to be saved. And you have exactly nine trees out of the many, many hundreds. And as you say, no, we haven't even inventoried everything that's in the, actually in the forest conservation areas, so it's a huge number of trees. We have exactly nine where there's some uncertainty. And the developers may feel they're more likely to come down. You may feel they're savable. But that is really where we are. I will say that I think the one element of surprise that I had not anticipated was that some trees in the forest conservation area would have a critical zone area that would cause them to be harmed so sufficiently, given the plans you have, that they'd have to come down. I don't recall ever having any conversation about that or feeling like that was likely to happen, so that is, I think, unfortunate that we're hearing that only in the course of this process. But I do respect that the plans are as they are. You can't keep trees that are going to die. And I also note that you plan to replant trees, and furthermore, that the trees coming down are ones that are very close to where your building is going to be, as distinct from anything that's out near Thornapple. But I guess I have a couple of thoughts to mention. But give me pause. First, I would personally be very comfortable with the approval for the 78. I don't have a problem with that at all. I think that's for the reasons that you'd said, Joy. I think in respect to the nine trees, I, my thought is not to approve those tonight, but ask the town staff to come back with a more clear, really much clearer process than we heard tonight as to exactly what they envision as being the process for reviewing and potentially agreeing to take the trees down. I will say that I am open to the thought of some process that is ultimately easier and allows a more expeditious resolution of things, issues that come up than having to come back to the council potentially for every one of those nine cases. But I wouldn't be willing to consider that tonight. I think more thought has to be given to that process to the determination by our arborist, to the town office, management, that, that, yes, they concur with the developer's recommendation, that tree number D, whatever, you know, isn't going to make it and does have to come down. I would just like that to be written out and clear. And then we can think about whether we're willing to work with a process which allows for town continued authority and control over where those trees come down, but might be done on a more expeditious way than having to come back to the council all the time. Okay, so that's, that I just want, that would be my instruction in regard to those nine trees. The other thought, which I think was raised at the excellent comment, which I had never thought of, and I don't know, we'd ever had any discussion, which is in regard to the stormwater management on the southwest corner. Absolutely, those pipes have to be strengthened. I spent a lot of time on the stormwater management plan. There's no question that has to be done. There's not going to be that much water runoff going on the storm drain out to Thornapple. Most of it's going to come down to Meadow. And those pipes have to be enlarged, so there's no question about that. Those trees have to come down. On the other hand, I think what was raised was a very good question, which is what would this mean for stormwater runoff right down what could become kind of an open bit of terrain that's quite steep? And so I would ask my colleagues to consider a request that there be a mitigation plan for how to hold back stormwater and what needs to be done on that strip when those trees come down, so that we don't have a whole lot of muddy water on the surface, not going into the pipe, but on the surface, coming down onto the sidewalk or onto Meadow Lane. So I'd ask consideration of that. And I'd also ask the consideration that we request for further consideration of what trees could be deferred to come down for phase two, and not all of them necessarily come down for phase one. I don't know what they would be, and I'm not trying to micromanage, and I understand you need the lay-down area, but nonetheless, ask the question, is there, are there some number of trees that could, that could stay up? So those, those were my thoughts.
A clarification question for you, Barney, on the process. So because some of that information is forthcoming from outside agencies, are you also looking for that to be a part of?
Yeah, I think it should be. Well, again, I would put it back to the town staff just to think it through more, right? Come back to us when you've really thought through those nine trees. A few of them are, as you correctly point out, will be caught up in regard to WSCC issues. Maybe the others are different and could be handled differently. I'm perfectly open. All I'm saying is I don't feel comfortable tonight feeling like we have enough written down and confirmed to process that I would be comfortable giving permission for those nine trees to be removed. I understand the intent. That's not the question. But I think that if we're going to modify or be asked to modify our procedures to something different, we should know exactly what those new procedures are going to be. And I don't think we've had adequate clarity about that tonight. So that's why I would just put those to the side. They'll come back in another month. But I am very comfortable with the 78. I have no problem with those.
The idea being that for those nine, it's like, it was like on-the-field kind of decisions, you'd like that to have that more of a process.
Yes, exactly. And we, making sure that it's clear that the town ultimately is making, the town is making the determination that the tree would be changed from being something to be retained to something that cannot be retained. I just, I want the town to be arbitrary. Normally, that comes back to us. If there's a way to, there's an interest in expediting that in some way, then work it out and come back and talk to us about it.
Okay, can I, can I, this just process for Dave and Talbert. So let's say we don't approve the nine for removal. That would throw them into, you'd have to prepare a mitigation plan, right?
Even if we did approve, they'd have to have a mitigated plan. Even if we did approve them to be removed.
No, I'm saying, if we approve them, if we say we don't want them removed, period, right now. No other copias. We don't want them approved. That causes them to produce a plan to keep them, a mitigation plan, right?
Correct, which Dr. Feather has indicated could be done with tree protection measures. And if I can make one other quick point. So as, as Deedon noted, if those nine So as, as Deedon noted, if those nine trees become dying dead or in danger of falling in the future, the applicant can file a permit application to have those removed, and the manager can approve it for those reasons.
Right, so that's, that's my point, my point is that, exactly that.
The staff suggestion just saves the permit, the application. But, you know, that, if that's given to the council hardware, that can be removed.
My point is, which is if we don't approve them for removal, it throws, they have to do a mitigation plan. And if they, if they die or become hazardous or whatever, the applicant would say, hey, these are dying or we're, you know, we can't save them. They go to Talbert in the town and, and Dave, and the town manager could approve them for removal, doesn't have to come back to us. So the process is, is fixed.
I, I thought there was something further or more expeditious than that.
The potential issue is if they died because of the construction, then that is a violation of the ordinance if they're damaged without having a permit issued.
I think on that point, then, then I really wonder why, I think well, puts us on exactly the same page, that not to approve those nine, which is where I was starting from. I was just saying, if you had some other proposal, come back to us. But, you know, we don't do that for any other tree.
Right, yeah, as a practical matter, the town would not prosecute for injuring a tree where a tree protection plan was fully complied with.
Can I, are we done with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So on the, the, the part where the stormwater drain is going to have to be enlarged and, and put in, is there not already as part of your plan to stormwater management during construction? Is there not, is there not plans to not allow runoff from that area? Sure, yeah, we're asking you the questions.
Two things, to answer your question, we can't have stormwater or anything run off the site, or we'd be in violation of our
Right, so during construction, we're covered. I think the real question is, is that after construction, and there's that barren tract of property there, is there something, is, is there another part of the planning process that will address how that gets revegetated?
Part of the 222 trees are actually going in that location. The mitigation trees are being planted on the mitigation plan. If you, I can show it to you here, it's, it's all these right here. There's, there's a good 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 trees being replanted there after the stormwater goes.
Right, are there any, are, are, again, is, is part of the process for landscaping and so forth, are you, in addition to the trees, would you be looking at any other soil retention measures in that, in that tract?
That's a good, that's a good question. Don't have a final answer on that because I don't have all the information. I do know that there's, there would be an easement there for the stormwater, so we would have to comply with sort of the regulations of the easement are, you know, we could put fences or something on it.
As part of the county setting the permit, I'm sure there'll be a super silt fence that runs along the limits of disturbance during construction.
Right.
And that silt fence can't be removed until the ground behind it is stabilized with mulch or grass or forest area, I'm not sure what that'll look like, but it requires stabilization or
It does require stabilization, and they'll, and the county reviews that. Okay, all right, that, that answers, that answers my question there. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, actually, while you're, before you sit down, you're getting your 10,000. Um, I'm just trying to go through all of the, make sure that I've been through all of the documents that are submitted in support of this. The tree mitigation schedule, it was stated in the narrative that you plan to plant 222 trees to mitigate what's being removed. On the color coded tree mitigation schedule, I roughly count around 100 trees that are listed. So I was just wondering if that's because that just reflects what's not in the forest conservation area, what's in the easement, or what, what that refers to.
I think that there are two kind of groups that we've grouped them in so that we could be clear and try to give as much information. The mitigation trees that, and I, assuming you're seeing the plan there, they're in one color where they're planted in ground. They're planted in all the ground around the parking garage that is underneath the buildings. The other ones are incorporated in that parking garage. So remember, there's a garage underneath the site. And so those ones are on top of that. And maybe th- those ones are not counted as part of the list of tree species that we have on that plan itself. Because the ones that are on that plan are the ones that are listed for the county. So we haven't listed what the individual trees are inside, if you will.
So that, this is still not very clear to me, to be totally honest with you. I, I would be a lot more comfortable, whatever it is that we approve tonight, and I think I'm with Barney that I'm okay with the 87 and would like to, 78, 78, and not deal with the nine. Um, I, I would like to understand exactly what mitigation you guys have in mind because I'm not picking it up clearly from what's in front of us right now. And again, I'm the newest member, I haven't been here for the, for the previous discussions. I see a list of about 100 trees that you guys have proposed that range from like two and a half calipers up to four or five calipers. But I don't know exactly where those go. They're coded with colors that don't pertain to any colors that are on a map that's in front of me. And I, and then I'd like to know what's being proposed for the other tree, 122 or so, and where they're going to go.
Sure, the, the color coded one, we didn't prepare, which I think you're looking at, the town prepared that one. But the, the, we can certainly give you a list of all the other trees that are there and what species they are. They're, they're part of the site plan, they're, they're known, so we could provide those.
Okay, I mean, I looked at what I have for the site plan here, and I couldn't see specifically what it was. And I, I don't need to slow things down, but I, I really want to see that and understand it before I sign off on anything, I'm sorry.
Just one other comment to me. The, and right, maybe I answer this too, the, on, on the, on the, what you were just referring to there, Steph, the plan that shows the planting of the new trees. On the south side, closer to Connecticut Avenue, you show a series of trees being planted, but then there's a gap, and then mother trees being planted. And I guess my, what I think we wanted to see is a continuous row of trees there, not something that's interrupted. Now, that may be, because you, there were some trees there before that are now going to be taken out, or is there some issue about that? But in any event, I think what is important for the screening that the residents on Woodside are looking for is a continuous row of trees without any interruption. So I would ask that, that maybe we have to put this
Except for the path, but yeah.
Except for the path, of course. But, but we may have to put this in our approval tonight, but that, that there be a continuous row of new tree plantings on that side.
The, the intent is for there to be foliage along that whole site. The area that is, I don't know, maybe it's 20 feet or so in that, in the, I believe the area that you're talking about, there is a, a part on the forest conservation plan that says trees to be saved in this area. So we're intending to save the trees in that area. Now, there's a, there's another stipulation in the forest conservation plan that says you have to eradicate invasive species, and there is bamboo in that area. So we're supposed to save those trees, but eradicate the bamboo. And so our intent is to save them, we're trying to save them. If we eradicate the bamboo and they're not there, we'd be happy to plant new trees in that location, not a problem.
Okay, but I think we, I guess, ask Todd, should we note that in any decision we take tonight to make sure that that's part of our?
That could be part of the approval, that could be a addition. And, and let me also note that as we've reopened the record to allow the applicant to address these limited issues, we should allow the opportunity for cross on those limited issues.
Okay. Is there anyone who has additional
comments on the, on the issues that Mr. Epstein just addressed?
This is Jessica Langerman at 6925 Woodside Place. I for one would be utterly delighted to see that bamboo eradicated and other trees planted in its stead. So that's my selfish wish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hearing none, I think we're, okay, thanks, Ron, keeping me on track there. Um, so is there anyone else that would like to make additional comments here? Okay.
Well, yeah, I do, I do want to make one last
Sure.
comment, and it's, and it's, we have spent two and a half years thinking about this, we've established a committee to think about it. We've had numerous public meetings, walkthroughs. And in the, in that process, as, as Joy mentioned, you, you eventually get to a point where you, rubber meets the road, and you actually have to solve the issues that have come up during that whole process. And we're at that, one of those points now. And I don't know, I've read every one of the documents, I've looked at every one of the plaits. And my final, I guess my final assessment is based upon the expertise of our arborists, which I rely upon to provide that professional oversight. And I want to quote for everybody, the last sentence of his, of his supplemental information, which says, while some of the trees are of significant age or size, I find that the removal is necessary if the project is built per the approved site plan. So in his professional opinion, he's telling us, he's looked at all this stuff carefully, we know he's looked at, we've directed him to, and he's looked at it. And he's given us his professional opinion. And I rely heavily upon that opinion. So I just wanted to get that into the record, thank you guys for your hard work.
Yeah, well said, everyone. I think that there has been a lot of thoughtful discussions. Art, again, bringing up our, our special committee, a member of which is, is in the room here, and, and some online, that worked really hard in looking at all the different angles of things and the balance that needed to be struck because the initial set of concerns was around the establishment of a forest conservation area, and then quickly thereafter, stormwater management. So with all that being said, I believe so many questions have been asked, but also answered. And I appreciate the, the partnership there. I am very happy to entertain a, a motion for, for vote.
Can we discuss a motion first?
If you want to, sure, of course.
I, I, I was, I was thinking about a motion that would say something to the effect that, you know, we approved the, the variance with the exception of we, the, the nine sub, whatever, the, wherever you want to call the trees that are not subject to removal right now. But then add on to the, add on to that, the other issue which Barney raised, which was the spoils area or the lay down area to the
Phase two.
You know, seeing if there could be something to mitigate those, and
Well, not so much mitigate as, as to hold off, identify what those trees would be for phase two. That's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what I was
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever his wording would be.
Okay, okay.
Differ, defer taking them down until phase two construction, actually.
But first, it's the identification of them to amend the defer.
But whatever that is, so that would be kind of the, the format of the, of the motion?
Well, and then I'd also like to add that we want a continuous buffer of, vegetative buffer of trees on the south side.
On Wood, Woodside.
Woodside.
Woodside, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And, yeah, I have a question also. This is for Ron, just as we've done in the past, where we've asked that, you know, if a variance is approved to remove a tree, that trees not be removed until demolition is ready. I mean,
The permits are in place.
Exactly, that we just, you know, that we don't have the situation that you referenced at the beginning of this whole hearing.
Yes.
So moved.
I think that, I, I think in the past, Ron
I think we have, I, I was actually really serious when I said that I need
I understand, so there is a, there is a mitigation plan, it's, it's in the site plan. It's, it's there, the documentation is there, and I think what you were saying earlier is you wanted to see that.
I've, I've looked at everything I have in front of me, and I can't find it, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying I didn't forget what you asked, I'm just saying that the documentation is there. It's not like that would need to be produced, but I, I heard you loud and clear.
Well, so here's my problem, I can't vote for this unless I see it.
You don't have to.
Okay. I would just, I would really urge, I don't, not having, here's the thing though, like, if I could see it, I would be able to propose something that would require a minimum size of tree, regardless of where the tree is going in on this property. But I haven't seen it, so I don't know what to propose, is the problem.
I understood that the minimum caliper size was, I wrote it down.
Dave, don't you got, I mean, one of the things
Three to four inch caliper size.
There's a two and a half on here.
Yeah, so, so the 222 mitigation trees include 92 trees that are required by park and planning as part of their forest conservation approval. And those are the trees that are, I color coded, Grant sent it, but it's part of the approved forest conservation plan that has the table and around sort of the perimeter of the property.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yep, the other trees are largely on top of the garage area and are sort of interior to the property. And we do not have species size or location data beyond the green circles on the single tree mitigation plan that's submitted.
But that, but that's where you get the total of 222.
The total of 222 includes both the 92 on the outside, plus the trees that are proposed to be planted interior to the property.
So just to be clear, the, in terms of your concerns or questions, the 92 that are around the perimeter that would be visible by the town.
Those we do have a list of.
Those we do have a list of, you saw that, okay.
Yes. It does, I just, it is, it is clearly, here, here's my, it is clearly what is most important to this town, are the trees that are going in around that perimeter. I realize that we've had a lot of comments tonight too on the habitat that exists right now on that property. And I think, I think that we have done the best we can, given, you know, the initial comments that Joy made about, you know, the property was sold, it's changed hands, we ended up with a use that was very, what is as consistent as it could possibly be with maintaining that habitat. So I realize that that was, that's a very serious concern that folks have raised. That site plan has been approved after a lengthy, lengthy process and series of comments and examination. I, I just want to make sure that we are being very, very careful with what goes in around the perimeter, which is to me like the other piece of what people are very concerned about. And as far as I can tell, it looks like the minimum height of the trees that are going in around there, now that you've explained to me where everything is going, is probably around 14 to 16 feet. Around there. Right. I can, I can be comfortable with that.
One, one, one comment, thank you for that. One comment that I make about caliber of the trees, we've learned, we've learned this from past conversations, is it's not inherently the case that you get the best results from putting in the largest tree you can.
Right, no.
The larger tree tends to have greater, greater issues with its root establishing. And, and, and my understanding is that sometimes when you start with a smaller tree, they actually grow faster and catch up within a few years to the larger tree anyway, but also have a better chance of surviving. And this is something actually we're debating, or it's been brought up by the Parks Department, and with Talbert's review as well, of potential trees in the Bethesda Market Park, that you, you don't want to put in the largest you can because they may actually be a greatest risk for failure.
I call it Talbert Feather 101.
Yeah, right.
So Stephanie, are you still saying?
I know, I'm, I'm okay with it, I
You're okay, okay.
Yeah, I would suggest, I guess, for those trees that are interior to the property. I know in our letter of agreement, our courses agreed to design those garages, so some of those can be canopy and shade trees. I would suggest putting a condition that they be at least two inches in caliper at the time of planting and on a list to be approved by Talbert or the town manager as part of the condition of the approval if the town decides to As part of the condition of the approval, if the town decides to approve the tree request.
I don't see harm in that.
Yeah.
And with respect to the warranty, typically we require a two year warranty. So for replacement trees, reforestation trees, would that apply here? Would it apply to all the trees or just the perimeter trees? That's something for the council to consider. Yeah. Typically our tree appeal decisions say reforestation trees have to be, as Dave noted, two and a half inches in caliber at the time of installation, chosen from a, a list approved by the town and warranted for two years. So that if they die during those two years, they're replaced. And a new two year warranty applies to, you know, each subsequent warranty tree. So I'm just asking the council to consider that. Is that going to be a, a condition here? And if it is, is it for all the trees or just the perimeter trees?
Can I, Tolbert, can I ask you a question? Is the two years warranty sufficient?
I mean, they're going to take care of the trees that they.
Right, yeah.
I mean, but that's if, if it was a different developer, you might be a little worried, but two years.
So you, you'd be fairly certain that if a tree lived.
If you get it through two years, you're okay.
You're okay? Okay. So two years is sufficient for you to say that the tree is probably going to be viable past that point. Okay. All right.
Unless we have a drought like we did this year. But normally yes.
Uh, so, um, coming up with all these lists of conditions here, how do we all feel about that?
I, I guess I, I want just to think about this issue of applying the warranty absolutely for the perimeter trees. There's no question about that. I don't know if I feel as, I, I'm, I'm ambivalent, I'll believe it that way, about the trees that are interior to the project. Uh, on one hand, those are town residents, so caring about the trees, you know, should matter. On the other hand, I don't think, you know, our background is sort of thinking about single family homes and trees and yards. I don't know what's going to survive best and what can be done in the interior of this space. And I, I don't know whether just insisting on replanning or replanning and replanning if something's not working is the right answer for that kind of space. I'm just asking, just raising as a question.
Yeah, but they, we, they'd still be covered. You don't think, you, you wouldn't want, they are covered by the two year warranty.
Okay. If we, if we say all trees, if we say all trees, right, right.
So that would, that, and I, I can't imagine that in a community like that, that if the interior courtyard start to look bad, that the, uh, the owner is not going to do something about it. So, and, and I don't know, like you said, I don't know what is going to grow well there and what is not going to grow well there. And they'll find out over time.
That's all I was getting at. I don't think we know.
Well, I, you know, to your point Barney, I think, um, you know, as I, one of our neighbors who mentioned she might be moving in over there or, or could be a candidate for living over there. I personally, if I were representing res- residents living there now, I would have a difficulty explaining to them why our laws outside of Corso don't apply to them there. They're going to be paying a lot of money, just as much as we're paying here. They deserve the same coverage.
Good point, Joy. Thank you.
Okay, um, so we have the 78 approved. This is the motion, sorry. 78 approved, nine trees are not a part of that, um, uh, today. They're automatically going to need to come up with a plan to, to save those. The stormwater management thing has been taken care of because of the mitigation. We're holding, we're identifying the trees, um, that are needed for phase two to be identified and kind of sequestered off. So that that is not part of this, uh,
Well, I don't have a problem of proving that they come down, but that they will not come down until phase two starts.
Starts. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Cause I was thinking that you, okay.
As determined in consultation with the town arboretum.
Right. If some of the 78 trees are, could be, the, taking them down could be deferred until phase two. That's what we want.
Okay, understood. A continuous row of plantings, uh, wood side, that, that be in there and that, um, there, it's a three inch caliper trees, um, with the two year warranty or two.
Two and a half.
Two to two and a half. Thank you. Two to two and a half. Those are the conditions that I'm seeing on there.
And that no work begins until all necessary permits have been obtained.
Which is our usual standard language. Yes. Okay.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, permits doesn't, is not the same thing as starting construction. We, we want that, we want the trees coming down just prior to notice to proceed to the contractor. They could get all their permits and find that the economic situation still doesn't warrant their starting construction for another six months, which is a perfectly reasonable thing that they might decide they have to do. But we don't want the trees come, have them, the, the trees should come down when they need to come down, which is just when they're ready to start construction.
Yes. Okay.
So.
So moved. Thank you. So moved. Second. Second, all those in favor? I. Ananmas. Um, thank you all for, uh, your comments. Hope you'll stick around for the rest of the agenda to the leading conversations. You know, we're going to take a five minute break, uh, and then come back to the agenda. Oh gosh. Well, the rest of it should go a lot smoother if we can get out of here.
I wouldn't worry about it. No.
Um, I don't think that there's.
Do I, Grant? You got what you needed? You got what you needed?
Attainable technical amendment. There was one thing I wanted to, uh, county growth. Because I know she wants to leave and I'm trying to think what I have a question.
Where are you finding? I'm so glad I'm retired.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
But Dean, you're willing to be hardcore and stay, or you're going to, you're going to jump out.
It's, uh, oh, it's all the stuff. It's Bethesda market park, HSI, the technical amendment, um, to our clarifying our, our authority, the county growth infrastructure policy, which is basically what you're told me is what I'm going to report and the minor master plan amendment. I'm going to try. Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully less, hopefully less.
And they're, and they now, I think they figured out the capital cost. And I'm going to reach back to the discussion we had on the noise wall extension. They're going to charge us capital cost of these panels and they will charge us a present value of expected maintenance of those panels over the life. And they will charge us a 10% fee, uh, for just administrative, just for housing. Exactly. Now that, now all that in the, for, for, you know, two extra feet of noise wall, all the way along 36 homes was 140, no, 110,000 dollars. So we didn't care. I think that's the order of magnitude for this, this panel, something in that range. It's nickel and so, but they, they somehow got tied up in the question of who's going to maintain these panels. I'm thinking to myself, I thought the county was because the county. Well, the, the, the purple line people are building the capital present trail for the county, but the county is going to take ownership of it and I assume have to maintain it. So I didn't think there was any discussion at all about the question of who. Well, it's not ours, but, and we will pay a present value for the cost of the maintenance. Well, no, we're saying that we should maintain it, but I think it's, it's, but somehow the purple line people are wondering is are they supposed to maintain these panels or is the county supposed to maintain these panels? Are they thinking that'll change the, who knows? All I know, all that Todd knows is, because he's the one that's having discussions, is that they have not been able to yet give us a final number for the cost of this thing. Because now we're trying to figure out who's responsible for maintenance. We're talking about a lot of heavy duty maintenance here, as you can tell. We've got panels you're going to wash once a year. You don't even have to do that. But do you, do you wonder why it's taken, why the, it's cost overrun since it's taken an extra five years?
All right. Yes. I am gonna. I still have to throw stuff in the bag and everything tonight. So.
All right. Well, thank you.
I'm gonna, as long as you have a quorum, I'm gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. You didn't, I did hear on NPR. I was very impressed.
Oh, did you hear that?
Yeah, I sent you an email.
You did. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I normally are driving along, you don't expect to hear anybody you've ever met. Suddenly, and now here's Steph Marts talking about the importance of the antitrust litigation.
I was on both, um, all things considered and morning edition. They reran it. It was very exciting. I know.
I think I heard all things considered. That was.
Yeah.
I'm not up in time for.
Yeah, it's, it's the most fun issue I work on. I love.
Go for it. Go for it. Bust that trust.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right. Thanks, guys. All right.
Oh, I'm sure they'll go a lot quicker.
Lot quicker.
We're motivated.
We're motivated. It's good. All right. So, uh, thank you all for obliging us the, uh, five minute break here. Um, let's go and dive into Bethesda market park.
All right. Um, not too much to report. The, um, basically there was another brief holdup between the county and the developers uh, in respect to the structure for the agreement. You may recall from past briefings that they have agreed that there will be two agreements in force. One is going to be a design agreement, which will cause the county to reimburse the developers for the portion of the design of the garage that corresponds to the public spaces. And that agreement is in process of being worked on and is very granular about the reimbursement rates and so forth. Separate from that is an agreement that's called a purchase and sale agreement, PSA, which sets out basically that once there's, all the permits are in place and the construction loan is in place and they're ready to proceed with construction. The, uh, Bethesda parking lot district, which owns the parking lot, will turn it over to the developers. The developers will then build the project. When the project's finished, the county will purchase a condominium interest, which will represent the final payment for the garage, uh, for the 200 public spaces. The county had maintained for a very long time that they wanted that agreement set out and agreed to upfront at the same time that they complete negotiation for the uh, reimbursement of expenses for the, for the garage design. Everyone said, great, no problem. Last week they said, no, we've changed our mind. The county, they no longer wanted the agreement executed. Well, that, as you can imagine, created a bit of, of, of concern. And, but I had spent some time talking to, to, uh, the representative from, from Bernstein. And what we talked through and what he now has talked through with DOT is what will be done is that agreement, the PSA will be negotiated, but simply not signed right now. It will be signed in the future at the time that the construction really proceeds. It is actually not, in my judgment, such a big deal because the key element of that contract was in fact, the absolute price for the garage. And, 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 and the department transportation always said, even though we want the agreement in place, we want to be able to change the, the cost of the garage at the last moment. We're not going to sign off today irrevocably on the cost of the garage when in fact, understandably enough, the bids haven't been put out, nobody knows exactly what it's going to cost. So what they're really saying is that since we're not going to agree on perhaps the most important single term of that agreement today, there's no reason to sign an agreement. Instead, we'll negotiate all the other terms. Everybody will know what they are, but then we'll essentially put that agreement in escrow. And then pull it out again at the time we get to the closing of, of the construction loan and we're ready to build. And that's when we will then insert into the agreement, the final price and then we'll go forward. So, uh, my understanding is that Bernstein is okay with that, premised on the fact that the county does represent, the, the county is in fact evidencing its commitment to the project because it will be in the meantime reimbursing for all the design costs of the garage. And it wouldn't be doing that if it didn't believe that it was really going to go forward with the project. Plus we have all the resolutions from the county council and everything else. And in fact, what this really does is make the county's position parallel to the parks department. The parks department said essentially the same thing. They have signed an interim agreement for the, for them to pay the developers for the design of the park. But they have not wanted to negotiate the final agreement for the building of the, of the park itself until they know what it's finally going to cost, which won't happen till all the bids are let out. So this all ends up being roughly parallel, essentially. I think from our standpoint, um, the key thing is for the reimbursement agreement to be put in place for the funds to begin to flow from the county to the developers for the portion of the garage that will become the county's. So that the developers are comfortable then jumping in with both feet for the design work that they have to undertake in order to prepare a site plan. And, and, uh, what EYA has represented to me is that, um, they have full, uh, permission from ultimately their source of capital from Bernstein. That yes, as soon as we are getting that money reimbursed to us from the design work for the garage, and we know we're getting the money reimbursed from the parks department for the park design, then we are, you have the green light EYA to go full bore on the, on the site plan, uh, preparation work. So I think that all can still, you know, come together. Okay. Uh, just, there's been more delay is the net of it. Uh, and now we're probably, I guess, since we're already well into October, I would be very surprised if it's, uh, if, if, I, I would expect now the best case is that the, the completion of the document for the reimbursement of the design costs on the garage, plus finalizing the negotiation, but not signing the PSA is something that could happen in November, but not, not this month. So that's what I know. Meanwhile, all the work on the design has just been stopped. Because there's no point in pursuing it until this agreement regarding the garage is in place. But, uh, as all of you have seen, we have, we worked very cooperatively with the parks department and sent to the landscape architects, a comprehensive letter setting out all the issues and concerns we had about their last cost estimate and, and the features in the park. So that at least is memorialized on a basis that's, uh, we and the parks department are very much on the same page.
And there's going to be a Elm Street Park, um, I mean, a little non sequitur, but because everyone keeps talking about the holistic elements of, of, you know, Bethesda Mar- I'm sorry. Yeah. Bethesda market park with Elm Street Park, there's going to be a discussion at the end of this month about.
Yes, that's right. About that. Right, right. Yep. That's it.
That's following up on the designs to the improvement to Elm Street Park, which were issued in like 2021 or something, right?
Yeah. I mean, they're just.
Yeah, they hadn't done any further work. They, they were, they were very uncertain for a long time as to what they should be planning for, as long as there was any prospect of the underground tunnel. And now that everyone are curious, that's just off the table. They said, fine. Now we only have to deal with the surface capital crescent trail. We can now proceed on designing the playground. So. And the last thing that I have, I've brought it back and the, the public services committee is happy to take on the issues of traffic associated with the, with the, uh, Bethesda market park. Yeah, right.
Thank you. Any question? I don't want to, uh, attainable housing is, is next. So there were a few listening sessions, uh, in the, in the last six or seven weeks or so, very well attended. It's unclear where the county council is going to go from here. But what I'm hearing more on the grapevine is that there's going to be a ZTA introduced, uh, possibly as early as this month. Uh, but it will be a small scale nature. So I don't want to say it's equating to what they have recommended for small scale housing, uh, zoning efforts, but something to start with, um, is what we're, we're hearing about. But I don't know if that's actually valid information. The, uh, there's clear concerns with respect to the, um, some more analysis is needed on, you know, actual attainment of the objectives of attainable housing, uh, and infrastructure capacity and, and things such as that. But we're kind of in wait mode until we get an actual ZTA. And I'd love to hear if you, if you think that we should be engaging in a different way until we actually. And I'd love to hear if you, if you think that we should be engaging in a different way until we actually hear, you know, more information with respect to a ZTA, I don't.
I, I just have a question about your general feeling of the, the county executives essentially saying, you know, this is, I just don't like this.
Yes.
I mean, what is that, is that, is that giving a lot of weight to not doing the full blown thing, or is this the council just going to say, that's the county executives?
I, I think it's the totality of all the comments that the county council members have received from residents as well as, as, um, you know, the county executive and, and all that, I think there was, um, you know, let's, let's see what we can do, but the idea that it, it will not happen, I, that is absolutely, I, I, something is going to occur, but the scale of it is, is quite unclear at this point. So if there's another way that you feel that, that I or we should be engaging while everything is being considered, I'm happy to, you know, talk about it.
I, I think, um, the absolute north star for us right now is getting that technical amendment. And, and, uh, I, whatever interaction we have with the county council at the moment, I think should be supporting that, that goal, everything else is, you know, I won't say a distraction because it's all important, and we want to register ultimately our concerns, but I would just want to make sure first things first, we have to get that technical amendment, and I want to make sure that, that we and the other municipalities who've done such a great job, Irene and Marshaling together, are working in tandem to get whatever degree of support from the county council may prove to be necessary to make sure our delegations are comfortable going forward with the technical amendment, and you're going, I know, exploring this with.
Yep.
Representative, uh, um, Gorman, what's his name?
Corman.
Corman, uh, but, but, um, I think that, that if we come out of all of our discussions with our delegations, feeling that a certain level of support is required from the county council, then that should be where we focus our lobbying effort on that point.
Okay, do you guys, yeah, okay, that, that's, that's cool, it's a great segue into the next topic, which is the technical amendment. So 11 out of the 12 municipalities, uh, signed on to a, a collective, a community letter, uh, stipulating our, our recommended language, um, for technical amendment that would clarify, uh, that regardless of the residential building type, the municipality would have, uh, regulatory authority, um, so the same thing that exists for single family would exist in the future, if it was multifamily building, wouldn't matter. Residence is a residence is a residence, uh, so that, um, the only municipality did not sign on, and not because they said no, as much as we didn't hear from them, is the, uh, city of Tacoma Park, so I think maybe in the future, um, but the, those, that's ongoing. The letter was sent to our state delegates, um, and then we asked the other municipalities who are in a different district to send it on to, to their state delegates, that has been done to my knowledge. And then we've asked each municipal, um, elected leadership to reach out to their, um, their state delegations as well to say, by the way, this is, this is important, it's not just Chevy Chase that's asking about this, and, um, also county council member, so, we've done our part in terms of our district and, and, um, uh, letting Andrew Fritzen know, and he personally is fine and, and supports this. But the idea of having a full county council, uh, support of this is something that we're also exploring conversations with, uh, other members of the Montgomery County State Delegation, is it that, because we already have, um, Jason Sartori is the director of department, the Planning Department, his, um, support, and he's even willing to write a letter to that effect. If, if, if that's going to be sufficient, or is the state, I'm sorry, the, the Montgomery County State Delegates also going to be looking for county council support, so we're going to be having a couple of conversations with key state delegates to understand what might be needed, um, from the, the county council so that we would, to, to Barney's, uh, point earlier about what do we, and how do we engage the county council that the primary thing would be around this technical amendment?
Does it, does it, um, make it more difficult in the state legislature to have multiple districts requesting, this was going to be introduced as a, what did you guys call it?
Local bill. Local bill.
So is it local because it's?
So of all the delegations, there's, there's several state delegations from Montgomery County.
Right, yeah.
All of them say, yes, we want this bill.
Well, that's what I, that was what I'm, so we've got two of those, though, two of those districts.
Two, there is another district that, um, is a part city Tacoma Park, so that's why we're still trying to work with them. But other members of Montgomery County State Delegation don't have any municipalities in their constituency, do you see what I mean? So this is.
So do we have, do they all have to, what I'm asking is, do all of them have to agree that, that it's a local amendment?
Well, the, I will say that it has been, the paperwork has been submitted by Delegate Solomon, um, for this, so, so the process has begun.
So there's a bill that would be a local amendment?
It would be a local bill.
And, yeah.
For the 2025, uh, yeah, but I think, I think you're asking a, a slightly different question, which is that does everyone has to unanimously, unanimously agree within the Montgomery County delegation to get it out of committee? This is politics I don't know, because I, I would imagine it's like, you know, many different local bills, um, that are, that are being introduced and not everybody. Yes. Well. Well, um, but the thing is that, as I mentioned before, you, you have a lot of them that don't have municipalities in their district, so it's kind of what, what's, this is important in my constituents, and that's the type of conversations that we're, we're hoping are occurring in the backend, uh, what we have been told, and, and maybe I, I should make this clear, is that, this is not a controversial bill, um, this is a, a clarifying of what was the initial intent, for municipalities in terms of their regulatory authority, this is not in any way, you know, trying to create barriers. It's, it's meant to make sure that the, we won't end up in, in courts, that the, none of the municipalities, so it's not being viewed as a controversial bill, if that, if that's helpful. So the, uh, in addition, all of the, there's been a series of talking points that have been delivered to each of the elected leaders about this technical amendment, so that when they're speaking with either county council member or their state delegate, everyone has a, an idea. And there will be at some point in November, we're, we're trying to get clarification on the date, when the state, Montgomery County State Delegation will present the local bills to the county council, and it's kind of like, here's our presentation of like, all the stuff that we're going to be dealing with come January, that is going to be discussed in November, um, but what we are trying, we're trying to get all ducks in a row so that this is just a, a smoother process as possible.
I guess that raises a thought, which I, I don't think I'd appreciated, Irene, that, that the technical amendment would actually formally be presented to the county council by, okay, I, I had not.
As one of the many local bills, yeah.
So I guess the question when, when we're, you know, having, when you're having more conversations is, to the state delegates, is it sufficient if at that point the county council just says, fine? In other words, you don't have to ask them for a affirmative statement somehow in advance of that date, but simply once it comes to the county council, if they say it's okay, what else do you need to know?
Correct, correct.
And then that allows the county council to keep it as low key as possible as well, which is probably what they would like to do.
So we'll have those conversations accordingly, just to get a sense, because I've, I've never witnessed, you know, this type of presentation before, um, so, okay, any thoughts?
But it, it does mean it's very important for us to, and for all the municipalities to get to all the council members in advance of that day, so that, you know, the council members are not surprised, that's the key thing, you don't want to have happen.
Right, right.
So, yeah, that, um, just the need for that.
Yeah, so we're kind of.
Just taking on board.
Yeah. The cra, county growth and infrastructure policy, um, there was a third work session on this, um, in front of the, uh, Planning, uh, Housing and Parks Committee on Tuesday, yesterday. Uh, if, for those online here, um, the growth and infrastructure policy is, is a, uh, policy that's updated every four years, um, and it looks specifically at like school and, um, uh, transportation adequacy, public, public facilities adequacy. So what's happening this year for that, from what I can tell, is that they're, what they're trying to do is, um, align what's called impact areas, so that when you call a school impact area, and it's the same as a transportation impact area. And you think that that would be just a small, no big deal bureaucratic adjustment, but in fact, the Department of Finance has said that this little change would result in a $300,000 per year revenue loss, um, and that is just because of the way, because they're misaligned now, you're collecting different impact taxes when these different developments occur, depending on what is happening with, with schools or infrastructure for that development. So because there'll be an alignment there, um, it's actually going to result in less revenue, uh, and, and this wasn't something that the county council was concerned about, um, necessarily, or at least county council staff, it just was kind of mentioned. But you know, that's a, as I see this, that's a bus rapid transit bus, you know what I mean, that's, you, if you think about it like that, like, it's a, it's a shame, but another thing that they're, um, they looked at is the changes to housing type indexes in terms of the weights, so we're always talking about student generation rates and what, what produces what and, and all of that. And so do you, do you base it on enrollment impacts over the next forty six, four to six years, or the intended context or vision of a policy area? So you know, there's higher density areas that, that the county is talking about, and do you, do you look at, oh, what would be the school enrollment, student generation impact based on what they want that area to grow to? Or what's the trend in the next four to six years? So they opted for the four to six years trend. Another thing they did was, uh, the, the recommendation was to make Great Seneca Life Sciences Center, White Oak Downtown and Rock Spring, become a, um, red policy area, if I'm not mistaken, and, and that would exempt them from, uh, doing any motor vehicle adequacy tests, much like what we do. What the, um, county council staff recommendation was, was to keep them, or get this, keep them orange, however, still exempt them from the, um, the motor vehicle adequacy tests. So it's quite interesting what's happening, because, you know, we, as a Bethesda area, have been used to this for the last few years, and, and now the chickens are coming home to roost, what, what it all means to be in a red policy area, but it's quite interesting what's happening where these orange policy areas are now going to be subject to the same frustrations that we go through, and what that impact is, is ultimately. It's a good question, I don't, I, I don't know.
I think Great Seneca is the area between, like, Petersburg and, uh.
Sure, was that it? Yeah, so. Right, so ju, just, that's the way you eliminate it, you know, um, there were other recommendations to exempt, um, of true affordable housing and mixed income, I'm sorry, mixed income housing and daycares, um, from doing any, um, L A T Rs, local area transportation reviews. That was also put on the table, uh, biosciences centers also would have an L A T R exemption, um, so ultimately the, um, the multifamily or mixed use, sorry, mixed income housing and the, yeah, that was, that was rejected as a recommendation, they still want to be able to do L A T Rs, um, but everything else, uh, was met, so still ongoing, um, that has to be approved by November 15th, like by law, um, so they're, they're going to work on that. Last thing is Bethesda Minor Master Plan Amendment, the report will be posted on the 17th of October, is that what you told me, Deedon? I think you said. Seventeenth? Twenty-fourth, and so the 24th of October is when it's presented, um, to the planning board, this is again, the minor master plan amendment is looking at the Bethesda overlay zone and like what to increase it by, uh, it's definitely not going to stay the same. That, it's, what's unclear is when the planning, um, public hearing, excuse me, when the public hearing will take place, so we might have as little as a week to react to this, or we might have longer, I don't, I don't know.
When will, when will it be posted?
The 17th, which means we'd have less than a week to react if they.
Seventeenth of this month.
Correct, correct, that's when this report is going to be, um.
No, no, that, that, that's the, that's the growth infrastructure, infrastructure policy.
Yeah, that's, I know, everything's happening at once, yeah.
So, so the Planning Department will release its report with its final recommendations to the Planning Board on the 17th of October.
Yes.
A week from now.
Yes.
Next, and then next week, okay, and then we don't know when the public hearing could be, but it could be as soon as one week after that.
Uh, we do know that, that, um, they're scheduled to present the report on the 24th, but sometimes what happens is the planning board will say, well, we'll take public comments also at the same time as the presentation. May.
Okay, and it's, so we'll see it on the 17th, or we won't see it till the 24th?
No, we'll see it on the 17th, we'll see it on the 17th, but what Deedon just said is, is that they might decide on the 24th, that's when they'll decide when the public hearing.
I got it, okay.
So, get, uh, maybe another week will be given enough time, we'll see, um.
One, one thing, let me just add, when, we did get one, one victory, one victory out of it. At the, at the initial presentation of the plan, uh, made to the, um, Implementation Advisory Committee that Deedon serves on, uh, one of the ideas that, uh, had been suggested by the Planning Department was that they, uh, allow to, a greater height for buildings that are outside of the core of the downtown, meaning basically the buildings closest to the neighborhoods, they would allow greater height if they put in more affordable housing. And we said on the spot that we approved, we'd been supportive of additional density, we'd been supportive of additional MPDUs, raised the percentage, we were supportive of the additional height in the core, but we had to have a deal for the saying, the heights are the heights, that on the, on the perimeter, closest to the areas where we live, that when we had negotiated in good faith for a maximum height of a building, say 90 feet, there was no basis whatsoever, ever for that to be changed, that had to be the final number. So, uh, we put, made the point, Deedon made a good point there, I spoke up, um, and when later on the, the plan was presented, to, uh, to, in this hall actually, it would, that, that idea had been dropped, uh, and so I asked, well, hey, that's interesting, you dropped, I said, yep, we've agreed to drop it. So anyway, that particular, uh, proposal, I'm sorry?
Stay tuned, yeah.
Stay tuned, yeah, well, but so far, at least the Planning Department is not going to propose it, let me please leave it at that.
Yeah, so the other, we, we asked, um, or our initial comments, not knowing exactly what's going to be in this report, is that the, any increase in, in the BOZ, in the Bethesda overlay zone, um, should be based on a comprehensive data analysis that's accounting for capacity, um, the public infrastructure capacity, and that any increase as well should be tied to the delivery of public infrastructure and amenities, so that we wouldn't be facing a situation in the future as we are today, which is that few public amenities have been delivered, but yet all this density, so, um, I don't know ultimately how they'll tick and tie, but that, those are to be held to account. Hasn't happened yet, but maybe they'll change your tune, and that is my setup updates there, are there any other items? Um, I did want to just mention, um, I know, I know we talked a lot about Corso tonight, but we did have a, a meeting about the, the signal. but we did have a, a meeting about the, the signal, um, red light, uh, signalizations. Because the initial, um, determination from OOTS, the, uh, what's the acronym stand for again? Safety, Office of Something Traffic Safety.
Office of Traffic Safety.
Thank you, thank you. Had said no, uh, to, to having a full red light, um, signal there. But we wrote, uh, and, and Corso followed up because they were the ones that were initially, Grant was the one initially notified to understand the data behind it, understand the explanation. This ultimately led to a meeting, um, that occurred Monday. This past Monday, uh, where all relevant agencies within, um, the, the State Highway Administration along with, uh, section three, um, uh, Grant was there, the town, um, I'm sure I'm missing somebody else that, uh, you know, kind of explaining a bit more about, uh, our concerns that could not be easily seen with the data. Like if, if you're just looking at the data, whether it falls, if it falls within the warrant or it doesn't. But there's more context a- around, around this. So they're taking another look. Um, they did say they would let us know by the end of this week. So perhaps Friday. I think you brought this up, yes.
Cause that's a kind of a, I mean, not for the people who live there, but it's kind of a dumb light.
Yeah. So that, and that was one of the.
Grand scheme of things, whereas if now you're going to have all this traffic.
Correct. And you're encouraging pedestrian traffic to, to the Corso site, you know.
Not only that, but just the people getting in and out of there.
Yes.
Having to, to make a left turn on Connecticut.
Yes.
You raised, you raised a very good point and we, we, we had discussed that internally. At the, in this discussion with the agencies, we didn't put it on the table, it's premature. What we did say though was essentially, why are you so concerned with the warrant information regarding this proposal when it's so self-evident that at this other light, there's two blocks further north, hardly anyone uses it? Clearly what warrant did you, what warrant process did you go through for that light? And you're saying now that you don't have the, enough traffic to justify this light we're proposing when you've got 400 apartments, traffic going in and out, people needing to, wanting to use the stores. You know, without doing a count, a traffic count, you know that this light's going to be much more heavily used than that other one. So we got kind of a, well, there's a bus route, it comes out, blah, 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 blah. But anyway, that's, Irene said, I think we've, we felt at the end of the call that they heard us and let's just keep our fingers crossed, but we hope that.
Yeah.
Turn around.
Yeah. Any other items, thoughts? Okay, great. Then I think we are adjourned. Thank you so much.